Welcome everyone. We, I'll call the meeting to board. And we're gonna do just a couple of hopefully quick things before we move into our conversation with legislators. So first on the agenda is comments from the public on items that are not on the agenda. I do have a couple of books here tonight, so Sandra would you like to go first?
Mop, would you mind letting them use your microphone?
Oh, no.
Good evening. My name is Sandra Chetton. I'm the mother of two children who have been diagnosed with dyslexia. A daughter in fifth grade at Fleming and a son who's a sophomore at Landmark High School. It has been a struggle to get both of my children the supports they need within the current educational system. This is why I'm here today, to speak to you all about Vermont's current literacy crisis and how the current system negatively impacts students with dyslexia. This year, Bill H. 406 was introduced into the House Committee on Education. H. 406 proposes to require that students in public schools must be screened for dyslexia characteristics and that teachers receive training on how to identify students who may be in need of additional supports or those that may have a possible reading disability known as dyslexia. This bill helps schools better fulfill the child find mandate as well and works in conjunction with the intent of Act 173. Today, Vermont is one of seven states left in the United States that currently has no laws or statutes related to the specific needs of dyslexic students. We don't even have the correct definition in our current rules. Let's pause and think about it. There are 43 states that currently have dyslexia enacted laws. Eleven of those states have handbook and resource guides. Vermont is solely behind. This bill is helpful, but it is not enough. According to the National Assessment of Educational Progress, our national report card, only 37% of our U.S. fourth graders are proficient at reading. This means that 63% are not proficient at reading. Reading scores decline in more than half of the nation's states and the data shows this marks the 17th year of declining reading scores. Thirty-two percent of Vermont fourth graders are below basic. Secretary DeVoy stated, "Let's be honest about what below basic really is. They can't read." Dr. Joseph Torgensen starts his article, "Catch Them Before They Fail." One of the most compelling findings from recent reading research is that children who get off to a poor start in reading rarely catch up. As several studies have now documented, the poor first grader almost invariably continues to be a poor reader and the consequences of a slow start in reading become monumental as they accumulate exponentially over time. While verbal language is innate, reading is not. What is the best way to teach reading? Neuroscience research shows that teaching the 44 unique phonemes, sounds in the English language in a direct systematic way is the best way to teach reading. Unfortunately, very few primary school teachers know these phonemes. How can these sounds be taught if you do not know them? Why don't teachers know these phonemes? Because they're never exposed to them in their teacher training. Our state colleges and universities are not training our new teachers using the latest research and best practices. The state needs to work with Vermont colleges and universities to include phonemic awareness and new primary school teacher training and include phonemic awareness on teacher licensure tests. Our elementary schools need to move away from the concept of whole language and balanced literacy and support professional development in a systematic, specific scope and sequence explicit multi-sensory instruction. Phonological awareness, phon fluency and vocabulary will lead to comprehension. Our current reading curriculum is lacking in the five essential components of reading instruction and there's no sound data to support this method of reading. Arkansas has passed legislation to require the curriculum professional development graduate studies recommendations for a public school district open and enrolled public charter school be in accordance with the science of reading and to require that the development of education create and approve curriculum programs that are approved by the science of reading. While the list hasn't been compiled yet, Arkansas did announce that use of the three cueing methods of reading or visual memory as the primary basis for word recognition would be disqualified. Under this direction, the reading curriculum and EWSD would be disqualified. Quite frankly, almost the entire state of Vermont, reading curriculum would be disqualified. Hiawatha is doing a pilot program with the Stern Center that focuses on general education, classroom instruction and uses a developmental spelling assessment, phonemic awareness skills assessment, phonological awareness screening test and test of silent word reading fluency for appropriate progress monitoring. I encourage our district administration to expand access to the Stern Center pilot program to all K through five grades, all special educators in our district and the school board committee to factor in advancing professional development in the science of reading in the upcoming budget year. By supporting H. 406, you will be helping our school provide early identification and the needed supports and interventions our students need and Act 173 proposes. From the state and local levels and with district collaboration, we can start to make positive changes that will not only better support Vermont dyslexia students but all Vermont students. Thank you everyone for your dedication and hard work in ensuring that we have equity for all students in Vermont. I would like to discuss these topics further with you and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you Sandra. We do not use this time for discussion, but if anyone has a clarifying comment, a question, I would look and answer to you.
Sandra, would you be willing to give a copy to the clerk so we could put your letter in our minutes?
Of course.
Thank you.
That would be helpful. All right, thank you. Can you identify yourself, please?
Good evening. My name is Kyle Bleak. I currently have a son who attends kindergarten at Hiawatha. I'm here tonight to ask the school board in your upcoming budget planning to please consider the need to assess the staffing levels within the kindergarten programs right now. I have been volunteering for the past two, two and a half months, about two to three times a week while my work schedule allows in my son's classroom. After the first few weeks of school, some of the stories he was coming home with about having to be evacuated from the classroom because of behaviors, violent behaviors of other students, constant interruptions to lessons and whatnot. I struggle to understand why the state has set a one to eight student to staff ratio for preschool and the very next year he's in a classroom with a one to 18 student to staff ratio with a lot of these students coming in that might not have been exposed to a regimented or structured learning environment either. I've spoken to the principal, I've also spoken to Superintendent Cobb. I originally thought my son's classroom was an abnormality. I've been assured that it's not, that this is more of a district that there are a problem that they're seeing throughout the district now with social and behavioral issues coming into these classrooms. I don't think it's fair to the teachers to expect one teacher to be hearing all of that. I don't think it's fair to the students, both with the behavioral problems and without the behavioral problems, to have just one adult in there to try to help them out. I know there are educational support teams in place, but I've witnessed in that classroom the one teacher trying to make a phone call to request help while also trying to keep the rest of the classroom safe by cordoning off a student who's deciding to throw blocks all over the room. This just does not seem safe. I go on the district's website and it says it's the policy of the district to maintain a safe, orderly, civil and positive learning environment. I feel like the current kindergarten classrooms are not meeting that policy whatsoever. At this point, I understand that it is what it is with my son, but I don't think going forward it makes sense to continue to operate this way. What the other speaker was talking about, let's start by building strong foundations, instill positive behavior, positive routines in these students, integrate them into a classroom environment where they can actually build and grow positive learning habits and contribute into the classrooms as well. That's all. Thank you.
Clarifying questions? Okay, we will definitely discuss that during the budget process. Okay, so tonight, thank you both for coming. Anything else?
No.
Oh, did you misspeak?
No, that's okay. No, no, no.
Okay. Sorry. Okay. So the first part of her agenda tonight is a discussion with our local legislators. Thank you for being here. We all have nameplates in front of us, so given the constraints on our time, I'm just gonna move forward if that's okay with you. And what we would like to do is, we have a list of issues that various members of the board are gonna present and then we'll come back to you and ask each of you for comments. You can choose to talk about one or two issues or all of the issues. You can ask us questions and so forth. But we would like to make sure you get through the list, so we're gonna take the list first. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm gonna move that without objection, I'll move that consent agenda to after this presentation session. Okay, so I'm gonna start off by talking about a law that you passed two years ago that was really important to our district. Now, law has a sunset about June 30th, 2020. This was done because the Agency of Education was hoping to rewrite all the defined human statutes. There's no question about whether that's gonna happen. The challenge in our district is that our Articles of Agreement have school board members seen that from Westford, from the town of Essex outside the village and from the village of Essex Junction. When the municipality runs the elections, they don't have any way to run an election for the town outside the village. Under their rules, the town is all the residents of the town and the village, which is part of the town. So, three years ago, I think it was, they put the person running for the town outside the village seat on the ballot for both the town outside the village and for the village, which was not how it should have been. Liz and Joey getting all those votes.
It was an exciting moment for me.
And there was no contest, so it wasn't a problem. But in our particular instance, we really need the school district to move on the election of the board members so we can be sure they're elected by a proper group of citizens. So I don't know if this means extending the sunset or if it means making the language permanent, but it's really important to us. And a second part of that piece of statute allows the school board to fill vacancies on the board instead of the municipality, which is again important for the reasons I have just discussed. Okay, we're gonna move now to school construction aid and I'm gonna turn to Brian to talk about that.
Thank you for coming. So in 2007, Vermont put a moratorium on school construction aid. School construction aid continued for about five years after that for everything that was in the pipeline, but since then, there hasn't been any flow. The moratorium was supposed to be temporary and a commission was supposed to be established and a new path was to be created. Recently, Secretary Dan French said, "It's probably time." He said that we have to really make some investments in our educational infrastructure if we're going to be a viable state and have viable communities. In June of this year, South Burlington Rep. Martin LaLonde gave an estimate of roughly $2 billion of construction is needed with our schools. If we assume the $2 billion figure is correct and looking at Chittenden County currently and the projects that are currently being considered, $2 billion is certainly perhaps a low estimate. It would seem very well that we're not talking about just the resumption of school construction, but as Secretary French says, that it's an investment in our educational infrastructure in order to be viable as a state and have viable communities. How do you see the topic of the school construction playing out, particularly the idea of the educational infrastructure and the viability of our state with the idea of attracting more population and greater demographics?
Okay, so that's a question you can answer when we come back to you. I'm next going to turn to Erin McQuire. Erin is our Director of Equity, Diversity and Inclusion as well as she continues to work on special education.
Hi, good to see everyone. Thanks for being here. I have been in touch with Dylan a fair amount around these topics, but I just think it's very important that all of you are carefully watching some of the challenges that are showing up at the state level as it relates to the definition of special education and the funding issues around Act 173 and the new rule implementation that will be coming forward. There is some differences of opinion between the Agency of Education and the Advisory Board on these issues. And while I know that there is a great deal of work going on to try to resolve those, it's very important that we do not constrain the definition of special education into something that is more restrictive than what is at the federal level, which is part of the challenge that was beginning to happen. I want to recognize Secretary French for walking back some of the direction that he had set as it relates to these topics and I just, I think it's important to keep in mind. The other piece that's connected to that that I think is important to mention is that Vermont, for the first time in a while, is under needs assistance at the federal level as it relates to special education. And I think that the agency needs a lot of support and dedication from the legislature to make sure that they're funded, to have enough people inside of that body of work to reverse that and reengage in some of the data collection and the work that's necessary at the state level to fall into compliance under IDEA with the Office of Special Education Programs through OSERS. So any support that you all can provide to that effort would be greatly appreciated.
Thanks everyone. I'm gonna turn now to Beth and Brian to talk about our concerns related to the Agency of Education and what we see as a lack of responsiveness and communication and training.
Yeah, so, I mean, we, I guess even just playing off of that one is that our system as a whole is as strong as the AOE and the AOE is as strong as all the districts. So it's really, I mean, it's always something that we advocate for, an exceptionally strong AOE that works collaboratively within, with the districts. The implementation challenges, the delays, the changes of the uniform chart of accounts and the financial software are problematic. Handbook II was just issued. There are 12 districts that have implemented e-finance prior to the chart of accounts being finalized. That is an exceptionally misplayed implementation process. So that is one key example.
And then the delay on the school climate survey, we were really counting on that to be able to give especially as a new district and have that data to work into our continuous improvement plan. And we heard in November that it would, from Secretary French, that it would be delayed indefinitely. It seems like something worthwhile in the state of Vermont to follow through on and be able to compare districts as well, so you, we know where we stand. So we could go out and do our own, that's a cost to the district. We did do an equity survey, which gave us some of our culture information that we needed and want, and we continue to work with that, but it would be nice to have something that's normed and we know that's, you know, we can rely on. And then the other thing is the launch of the annual snapshot, which in 2017, when I first became superintendent, I actually think it was I had signed a contract and wasn't even on board yet, so it might have been in the spring. I went to an annual snapshot workshop with Amy Fowler, who was there as deputy then, and it was really exciting to think about this annual snapshot. Didn't hear much about it, learned like then and then all of a sudden it's in play. We as educators have not had any formal training in it. The school board at the regional meeting did get a snapshot of the snapshot and, but really no training. It's intriguing, I want to dig into it, but I, it's a difficult thing to use right now because of the training, but great, be awesome if we could use it for budgeting, but it sits not trained right now.
And I think the last thing, the last thing we wanted to mention is, last year we had seven, nine iterations of equalized pupils.
Fourteen.
Fourteen. You know, trying to prepare a budget and equalize pupils is a huge determinant in the tax implications and what you're working on to have the information continue to change is quite frustrating.
And I think that is a key where it is, what we're getting is because of the results of heroic effort and some amazing expertise, but there just isn't enough staff to manage an Act 46 lawsuit, four or five iterations of potentials for our merging districts and going historically to find out what those averages and ADMs would be, you know, we're talking like Cray Supercomputer kind of thing? And we've got somebody that's doing it while answering dozens of questions and information requests from the legislature. So, you know, again, it's the AOE's capacity really well serves the school districts.
Okay, so we're hitting you with a hot hat. Thank you for your patience. I'm gonna turn to Patrick to talk about technical education.
So I may ramble a little bit, apologies, that's just my way, but I did bring backup just in case. Carolyn Dickinson, I called her earlier today just to make sure I was gonna be on the right track, so Carolyn, please feel free to jump in at any point if I, you know, start going off.
Hand gestures work though?
Exactly. Yeah, right, just like sign stealing. But I think technical education is so important for the state, in particular knowing the demographic challenges that we face. And as I heard our director, excellent Bob Travers, say is that many of the kids who graduate from technical education courses are the kids who stay, you know, the kids who are going to remain in Vermont. But the system as it is set up right now, because it is so radically different from the rest of the funding, in many ways actively discourages districts from wanting to send students to tech education, you know, buildings like ours. Because of the tuition model and how it is set up, you know, Bob and the CTE staff has to work very hard to keep their costs down and to keep that very low, which means they don't have the funding to go out to the lower levels of grades, you know, sixth, seventh, eighth grade and present technical education as an option for students by the time they get into the high school, especially in a district where they may not have a tech center. You know, they're not being encouraged to then go check out CTE in Essex because, you know, who wants to lose the $15,000 in revenue? You know, that would come from needing to bring that in. I just think that as it is right now, you know, we know that the skills that are being taught at the tech centers are the ones that we need desperately in Vermont right now, but because of how the mechanism is set up and how the funding is being addressed, they just, we're losing the opportunity to teach and to get a workforce in place that really could, you know, benefit and cover this, this hole, this patch that we know is, you know, a really desperate need in Vermont. And then the redundancy of programs, I apologize actually.
Brian?
Brian, could you? Yeah, it's so, I mean, I think it's a whole flexible pathways, it's 77, it's personalized learning, we understand the importance of it, we understand experiential, and there's been a push, I mean, tech centers in Act 46 time period have been nearly forgotten. And so, but what's happened in that time period is with personalized learning and individualized so forth, there has been an explosion of tech center-like programming happening in high schools all across the state, which creates competition, which already has a natural kind of limiter on that competition and students leaving traditional to go to another school. And so what's happening is, you know, we're, we're kind of painting a picture where the tech centers are gonna have really next generation, next century kind of work picked off as that looks attractive for high schools and we're, it's just not a, it's not a path of success that I see. You've been seeing that competition happen. And we're starting to see competition happen at the middle school levels as well, where technical centers would be infinitely wonderful to put in and meet that need in some unique way opposed to duplication and redundancies.
Right, but the schools obviously want to keep their kids where they are, they don't want to lose that money. So the existence of the tech center becomes not a threat, but you know, and certainly a worry for them. So, you know, why not expand these programs that they have in place that do sort of compete against what a tech center could offer? You know, there's just a lot of crossover and overlap like that where if we had maybe some clearer definition, I think it would go a long way towards, you know, helping, making sure that, you know, they can, both the schools and the tech centers can coexist, you know, very well together.
There's an opportunity to evolve both so that more are served.
Carolyn?
Yes, she likes that. With the consideration of expansion of access into middle school or consideration of comprehensive technical high school, we're the only, one of the only states in the U.S. that doesn't have a comprehensive technical high school model. So that would really enable a pathway from middle school through high school with comprehensive planning for all of those grade levels as students, you know, plan and access their learning. Another option that we've talked about is, is there the ability for fifth year programming for students transitioning from high school potentially into college or the workforce as an opportunity to professionalize? And there, again, there are funding difficulties with regard to that, where we do allow access to adults for career in tech ed, but they're not reimbursed at the same rate as a high school student. So it really kind of makes for competing interests. So it, it really kind of makes for competing interests, you know, when we're trying to make sure that we're serving a wide spectrum of folks with all of the resources that we have at career in tech ed.
Thanks Carolyn. I'm gonna turn to Kim to talk about healthcare.
And I think as we are all well aware, we probably have more questions now than answers and, and, you know, no matter how many times we sort of ask Brian, what is this really gonna mean, what is this really gonna mean? There are some pretty fundamental changes, just even in our case, in the definition of eligible employee. So that will immediately have an impact potentially. I don't know that we've been able to even do that one piece to know what that cost may be. So I think the process itself, I hope that the legislature will seek input from the commissioners to consider what modifications. This is only a two-year contract. I don't think, I know in any two-year contract or a year, you're done negotiating and you're starting negotiating, and it, it will lend itself, I think, to a reflection on the process to better understand what might improve it moving forward. I think it, among that, and then having spoken with Elizabeth from South Burlington, who chaired the commission earlier on, well before knowing what was gonna happen when they had the fact-finder's report, and they were still trying to have conversations before it go into binding arbitration. Other states or other situations have allowed for the arbitrator to choose the fact-finder's report, and that is not part of this process, so they truly were left with two choices. She certainly acknowledged that if that were a choice in this legislation, this piece of legislation, that maybe people don't work as hard during that time to get to something closer or even to settle before binding arbitration. That being said, the fact-finder's report, I think, seemed to take into consideration middle grounds on things that aren't found in the results of what the arbitrator returned, speaking from this side of the table, I guess. And so I do hope that the process will gather as much information as possible and make whatever necessary changes can enhance the process, because, you know, we have a long way to go before knowing its true impact. And I think part of the challenge was a real disconnect in how both sides saw the legislative intent and perhaps even the governor's intent. And so to whatever extent in any legislation that can be very clearly articulated, there seemed to be a misunderstanding about the cost containment component that I know was at least on our side, it seemed quite like a driver to, to try to mitigate ballooning healthcare costs in general and to share some ownership and decisions that lend themselves to better containment of costs, no matter where you come down on the cost share piece of it. It was, how do you sort of shift the, the overall expense of the program? So I think there was a very different view on each side as to what the governor's intent and the legislative intent was and whether or not that was a piece of it. So I invite you guys to listen, as I'm sure you will, and really actively seek that input on how to make the next round better. And we will in the meantime look for as much clarification as those in the know can provide at, at as expeditious a timeline as can be had. And we're well aware of the tax commissioner's letter, and that had not factored in, I don't believe, the costs of this result. So we are all looking forward to more information, I think. So thank you.
Thanks, Kim. I'm gonna turn to Beth now to talk about Act 166.
So with Act 166, we continue to have concerns about the inequities it causes. The population that really can access that 10 hours is the population that we weren't trying to reach through that act, so it does cause those inequities. And I know we've talked about this, but Erin, do you have anything else to add to that? We just want to put it on our list because it's still on our radar.
I think in addition to the financial challenges with access, there's also a limitation on children who experience disability and family choice as it relates to where they can and cannot send their children and access the services under special education. So in addition to the financial implication, and I think it's also worth just noting in my experience as a person who oversees this work, there are fewer and fewer preschools that will offer only 10 hours. So even though we have 10 free hours, the private environments are requiring a higher number of hours, which accentuates the inequity as it relates to cost that a family can and cannot afford. It's my understanding that Act 166 is likely to be a significant topic, and I would just offer on our behalf that we would be happy to be a resource to you as that continues down the road and feel really passionately about it.
I do feel, on a positive note, I do feel that we have a better handle on numbers since the Act 166 came into play, so that's a positive thing.
And knowing our kids better, that are coming in, we have data around their skills, and that's very, very helpful. So that, agreed, very positive.
Thanks. Erin, I'm gonna turn to you to talk about the waiting study.
So I'm sure you are all aware that there is a waiting study coming out as it relates to the census grant under Act 173. And I would just caution as we accept that report into the legislature to think about the various ways we can think about student populations, and that's not just about counts and numbers. And so thinking about, as an example, students, if, if there are a number of students with particular demographics who are doing as well as their peers in an environment versus another system that has fewer kids, but the inequities as it relates to services and achievement, and there's a significant gap, statistical analysis from a count perspective does not work well to serve students best inside of that conversation. So I would just ask that everyone be very, very careful consumers of that information. I am looking forward to receiving the report, as many other administrators are in the systems as well as teachers, and are a little bit nervous that it is going to simply focus in on like, how many kids have this demographic? How many kids have this demographic? And therefore, your amount of money that you will get will change kind of regardless of outcome, regardless of rural versus larger school districts. I think size and scope matter in this conversation, and so looking forward to the conversation, but also just wanting to be careful in our consumption of the analysis.
Okay, I'm gonna turn to Kim to talk about the mental health services.
I think here it's, it's a perennial matter, and I think probably as long as any of us have been involved with education or the legislature, it's an ongoing concern that it is true, I think in many instances, that delivery of service is safest and best done through our schools, that the majority of that cost and capacity is expected to be borne by the schools is increasingly difficult. And while I recall literally every single year that being a conversation of better collaboration and shared supports and maybe even capacity building and share of costs, I've not noticed that to be happening ever over any of the years. And then so moving that good intention, from good intention to action, would be very important. I think probably we benefit in Chittenden County, maybe more so than other counties, from the resources that are available within our county. And this problem gets all the more challenging outside of Chittenden County, and we realize it to be challenging in terms of capacity here. So recognizing that it is all the more difficult as you move outside of our more populous areas for the capacity and the additional costs borne when there's not even the resources to be providing the services in the immediately surrounding areas. It, we are passionate about doing this for kids, they can't be ready to learn if they're not ready for every other part of their life, and we fully recognize that that often is most safely happening here. But let's share the responsibility and the cost, please.
And I think as you heard earlier from a parent, I think we are seeing more and more children exhibit significant mental health issues in our school systems. Finally, I would talk about the fact that last-minute changes to funding formulas that happen post-hummy day are extremely difficult. I think we're particularly worried this year because we know it's an election year and we know that the costs, at least the estimated costs that came from the tax commissioner don't look good. So we hope the legislature will be really careful about who, what they do and don't do what they did a few years ago where the legislature implemented a clawback on healthcare after our budget was passed. That's very difficult to manage. All right, well, that's a big lot of topics. I'd like to give each of you a chance to comment and to ask us questions if you have them. I know, Jenny, you have some time constraints, so we'll start with you.
I do have time constraints, but I really would like to thank you all for your comments and your questions that you've asked of us. Some of what I've heard tonight really reflect symptoms of a system that is not adequately supported with resources. And I, I begin at the agency of education that you have all very much recognized, and I continue right down to the local schools. It's one thing to be efficient and cost-effective, but it's very much another to be too stingy so that what we need is, is not accomplished. So when I think about the mental health issue in particular, where we absolutely need to invest more in our mental health resources, the administration and, and community members, and I was a part of it for at least some of the time, completed a, a long think tank this fall on mental health. And part of that is looking at how, what is the continuum of care? And, and how can we extend it into schools as well as utilizing community services? So that report, I know we always have to have a report, but it's fairly comprehensive. And I'm gonna take your thoughts and your comments with me as we look at that. The other piece I think that is really critically important that a number of you brought up is on, on the workforce issue and with respect to the technical center. I'm, I'm very curious about the, what we're seeing as a divide and conquer with having two separate technical programs, essentially two separate technical programs with middle school and high school. There has to be a way to resolve that, maybe it's through some special certification that folks get when they finish technical school that's not available to others. We did work very hard on workforce with childcare workers this, this past session and did put some incentives in place for, for kids who were completing their early childhood certificates. So there, what you are talking about really resonates, I think, with a number of us sitting here and certainly with the rest, rest of our legislative colleagues who, who are not here. I do have to leave, I, I apologize for that, but I'm, I, I appreciate what you have said. And there are a lot more things, I don't want to take up everybody's time. But the, the one healthcare piece I didn't hear about were as you're negotiating to ensure that you are moving into our reform process for payment per member per month and negotiating that with the carriers that you have, because that will ultimately save money. It will put money back into the pockets of the people who are paying for their premiums. And it, and it is, it's kind of a difficult place to be, it doesn't sacrifice benefits in any way, but it does allow for some streamlined, more efficient payment of services that benefit you and benefit people who are getting those services. So I will stop, but I, I thank you so much, this has been, this has been terrific.
Well, thanks for coming, Jenny. And please, whenever something comes up, we're happy to hear from you and to try to get you answers that you need from us.
Well, please get in touch with me. Oh, no, not everybody, no, just one, no.
We're not shy.
I'm just kidding.
Thanks, Jenny, thanks for coming.
I'll see you.
Lauren, can I turn to you?
Sure, I want to pick up where Senator Lyons left off and just reiterate the, hopefully the desire to negotiate into the payment reform that we're doing. As Senator Lyons said, it's, there's, there's no change in benefit, but it will impact our statewide reform that we're working towards. And I think there's quite a bit of misinformation out in the media on the, the healthcare reform model. And so as you're talking amongst each other or with people, and if you have any questions, please reach out so we can make sure that you have all the facts in front of you. I have a sixth grader at ADL, and he, I drive him crazy because every day he comes home and drill him about his day, and then he'll say something like, well, yeah, we had to fill out this personalized planning thing. I'm like, well, show it to me, what is it? Tell me all about it. And, you know, and then he runs away because he doesn't want to talk to me. So, but it's really interesting hearing what's happening, you know, at the State House and then coming home and having my son talk to me about it in sixth grade. It's really exciting. I mean, what you all are doing is, is fabulous. And, you know, I hear people, I just recently have been out with some folks who've just moved to the area, and they moved to Essex because of the school system, so I just want to say thank you for all that you are doing. I think that personally for me, these are all important, but they all go to Dylan's.
That's true, he's in the hot seat.
I just do healthcare, he does education. So, but the, the technical centers is a real passion of mine as well. Mary Beth and I did a tour of the center last year, and we both left hot to trot to draft the legislation about bringing it into middle schools and doing more, and it turns out all of that legislation was already sitting out there. So we are both advocates of, of trying to work through that. In regards to the mental health, I do sit on the healthcare committee in the House, and we do have responsibility over mental health as well. And last year, during the budgeting process, we heard about six, Success Beyond Six, which quite frankly, and I had only been there two years, but members who had been there much longer had never heard of it. So I would actually like to ask that I can come back in and meet with folks within the EWSD community to learn more about what is happening in the schools. You know, we left last year in our committee saying we really want to look at this, we know it's important, we want to look at ACES, we, we know it's all connected, and the only way to change it is to start early. And so we, we are focused on trying to do something there. So I would, if you don't mind, I'll reach out to Kim maybe at some point and try and come back in.
Sure.
Sure. We will find you the right person.
Okay.
For sure.
That would be, I would really.
Maybe, but certainly whomever you reach out to, we will figure out who the right person is.
I would really appreciate it. You know, I just came from, the governor was doing a Chittenden County for the day, and I went to his session this afternoon where he met with first responders from fire, police, and EMS, as well as the Howard Center Community Outreach Team and the Burlington Street Team, which our committee had a big piece of pushing through the budget. And to hear the success they're having is really incredible, but it's really collaborative. You know, to your point, Kim, it takes everyone, and the funding for that is the state, the towns, and UVMMC. I mean, it can't just fall on basically our taxpayers to fund what we need to have happen in the schools. So, yeah, that's a, I appreciate you bringing it up and all of these items. And now I'm going to let Dylan talk.
Oh, dear. Well, thank you, and I'll echo what Lori said. We really appreciate the work that you do. The agenda that's set at statewide level is often aspirational. Sometimes it's dysfunctional. And it's the locals who actually are the thread that makes it all happen. And I think we understand that. We have a lot of pride in local control in Vermont, but the way it plays out in individual communities is really significant. Many of the challenges you're describing, we're looking at in the Education Committee. We have had this experience now with Act 46 where a lot of tension has played out around the state. It has created fractures in parts of the state. It has been frustrating. It has been bitter. And there have been legitimate grievances, I think, brought forward through the process, and we've tried to evaluate them. In 2017, the legislature and the governor provided some flexibility so the Act 46 process could play out on a timeline that provided some more flexibility. And then last year, we had a pretty significant blow-up around whether or not the timeline should be extended. What that has done, not to diminish the goals or the accomplishments of Act 46 or the fact that this community and our communities in this district moved quickly to move forward with that model and embrace it and look at what you've done. But what it has done, I think, is distracted from a lot of the really big work that educators and local education systems were asked to do over the last 10 years. And so when we look at the Acts, I won't name them, but you know them, the 77, 173, blah, blah, blah. I mean, these are significant pieces of legislation, and the numbers on the act name actually sort of downplays how much work the state gave to the locals and sets you loose. And all the while, we've had this major debate playing out around Act 46. And I know that every couple of weeks, you guys have major debates playing out here, even if it's just the voice of community members trying to come forward and advocate for something that's a really worthy goal. I think we share the belief that education is worthy, and we try to work together to provide a better opportunity for all of our students. I mean, that's why you're all here. You don't get paid for this. So the good news is, we're going to take care of the elections fix. That's not a problem. The only problem that's there is sometimes things get dysfunctional like they did in 2017 and 2018, and it's harder than it ought to be. But we'll take care of it, and we're on it. On school construction, though, I do actually want to say this. You know, this is the time of year when I start carrying around a copy of the Education Fund Balance Sheet, which shows the sources of revenues and the uses and the projections that we had for actuals at the end of the year, our projections for mid-year, and what we're looking at in the projections going forward on what we expect education spending to be. I usually carry that around. I don't have it. But I know this. So the tax commissioner's letter said $72 million of spending growth. That's roughly 6%, depending on how it all washes out. It will be different for every payer based on homestead, non-homestead, et cetera. What I know is this, that when I look at what's going on on the balance sheet, there is some good news, but it's not going to save us forever. The good news is meals and room tax revenue and sales and use, I think it is. I mean, they're performing very well. They're performing very well. So we're giving the Education Fund a little bit of cushion for what happens next. The challenge will be if we enter a recession, those revenue sources will go down. We see that our pupil counts are projected to go down about 900. So there is a small leveling out happening, but we're still seeing declining enrollment. In Essex, you're fighting against incentives going away, which makes it hard to demonstrate the value of these changes if right off the bat, you're behind by two cents. And then additionally, when we look at it, we're still seeing special education costs growing because we've delayed implementation of 173, and we don't know how that's all going to play out for local districts. So there's a lot of uncertainty. The piece that I'm most frightened about is school construction aid. And I'm glad you raised the question, Brian. I think this is the significant sleeper issue that has major ramifications for the next 15, 20, 30 years of education in the state. And here's the problem. And I'm actually really worried about this. And luckily, I don't know how many people are watching, so we won't spill the beans to the whole world, but here it is. If you look at what Act 46 did to unified school systems without wanking out here, there was a change in the relationship between the agency of education, in effect, and local districts as to who is a trustee for decisions that are made. In the past, school construction aid was actually a partially a function. It was almost like a state function, and there were state staff that would assess school projects, and there would be funding available, made available to districts that would support and offset some of the costs. I'm deeply troubled by the ramifications, really, of what might happen if school bonding costs are happening and spread out across the system through our current funding model. I don't know what that means. But based upon some of the controversy we saw during Act 46 of bond covenants, these are the legal documents that bind a community to have to pay for the debt of the decisions they make with infrastructure. I'm not sure how that plays out in our funding system. And I'm not sure what happens in the education system if there are challenges to that structure. So I actually view school construction aid and the state playing a more robust role as an imperative if we want to maintain an education system that has a Brigham component where education is provided in an equitable manner. And I don't know that many people are thinking about that. It's not that I'm the brightest. It's just that it kind of scares me. And it scares me what happens if we move away from that model. So we're thinking about it, right? I think the $2 billion figure is low. I think it's low. And what the implications are, even if you have amortized costs with debt service and other things over 30 years, whatever it is, it's still a big price tag, and it's a big driver in our education costs generally. So the work you're doing is really tough. So we'll try not to mess anything up. I mean, I'll talk to Dan French and anyone else we need to. We're all on it. We talk when we need to go to the mat to get a change, even if it's the election thing. You know, we'll all talk in the delegation, and we'll get it done. But the bigger picture stuff, a lot of that's with you. So I just want you to know how much we appreciate it. Every time I bring a representative of the Essex Westford School District down to testify, you make our community look great. And it's a proud moment for everyone there. So for what it's worth, we hope to get you in there. We need you. We need the experts there. We can do all the work. And I just hope that we can continue the collaboration. And I know I emailed Martha and Beth and Brian and Erin during the session, and I've got all these terrible process things that I'm going through. But we'll get through it. And if anyone else on the board ever wants to discuss an issue on any of these issues, I mean, we're talking about them, and I would just love to hear from you. So please reach out. And also, I just, I'm thrilled that we have a couple students represented tonight because that hasn't always happened when I've come to the meetings. And so to see that play out and to see new faces and new folks being involved, it's really great. So I'll just leave it there, but I'm happy to talk with anyone who wants to.
So just kind of jumping off your school construction, infrastructure point, you know, I'm in Human Services. I sit on the Human Services Committee and as well as the Joint Child Protection Committee. So I'm not as like in the day-to-day weeds as Dylan is on education issues. However, we had a recent gathering at the State House prior to the session, and Congressman Welch was there and gave us a little pep talk for the coming session. And the very first question that Kate Webb, you know, the head of the House Education Committee, asked him was about infrastructure. That was the very first question she asked, and she said, what are you doing at the federal level to really help our schools and to pump money? And he's working on it. He's got legislation, but of course, everything's very tied up in what's going on there now in Washington. But I just was impressed that that was literally of all the things she could have asked. That was number one on the list. So I know it's on the, it's on our docket. It's, everyone's aware of it. And I think, I'm hopeful that as part of some infrastructure bill at the federal level, this will be a priority because I think the needs, not only in Vermont, across the country, are significant. So it's going to require like a real infusion. So that's what I'll say on that. The other thing I wanted to say about Act 166. So this past week, myself and Kate Webb and Jessica Brumstedt, who also is on Human Services, the three of us did a tour up in the farthest parts of the Northeast Kingdom and the North Country. I had never been to Canaan before, so I had my first trip up there. At any rate, we've visited about eight different programs, preschool programs, early childhood, private, public, and those that are kind of meshed and do a combination. And that was just one kind of field trip that Kate has been on around the state. She's traveled the entire state with different members of education and Human Services because looking at how effective Act 166 has been and what the tweaks, you know, what tweaks are needed is very much a priority in the coming sessions. So we heard a lot of very interesting testimony. Many of the issues that you raised, Erin, about equity, about number of hours, about the possibility of subsidizing more hours. And also, what was really interesting to me was how each community had kind of put its own unique kind of combination of things together to make it work for, you know, some communities had transportation that would pass through the community midday and drop off kids, you know, in the middle of the day and pick up other kids. And so Kate was pulling together all of those different kind of models as a resource for schools and trying to get people to kind of be creative together. But it's definitely on the docket for being looked at. And, you know, if, I would say if you all have testimony here relative to Essex, it would be great, you know, or want to contribute to that conversation, I would really invite you to, you know, let me know, obviously let Dylan know because it's his committee. But I know education and Human Services, the goal this year, they've kind of operated separately in silos, and the goal is really to bring them together this year because we handled all of the childcare legislation. And so the thinking is, how do we, how do we create the seamless system from early ed to universal pre-K? So we're going to be very much as committees working together. And I'm seeing that more and more in the State House. You know, the committees used to be very kind of siloed, and more and more, we're, you know, with just continuance of care in mental health, in substance misuse, all of these things, we're really trying to come together and figure out these systems across committees. So I think that's encouraging. In terms of young, really young children, prenatal to five, my committee is working really hard right now around the Children's Integrated Services line item in the budget that unfortunately is being proposed. The governor's office is proposing it, some of the funding going away because they're going to restructure that program. And so there are numbers of us who sat today through preliminary budget adjustment hearings and appropriations to really hear what their plans are. I personally am going to really fight against that. That funding is essential for, you know, the young, or the gentleman who was here earlier talked about the behavioral stuff in the classroom. I mean, this is the earliest levels of really identifying that behavior and addressing it, intervening. So I, so we have to figure out with that system, the funding has been underutilized. And so the governor is responding and his administration, which I get, like, oh, it's not needed. Well, the underutilization of it, what we've discovered, is because it's not reimbursing the people who are doing the work. Like, it's so ridiculous. They can't even afford to do the work. So we're going to really look at that and figure out how to do that because that is the aide in a childcare facility with someone when they're acting out. And you, you know, you don't have to have the teacher rely on dealing with that situation. So that's a big, literally the first week of the session. We are going to be really trying to restore that funding while they redesign the program. They want to redesign that program because it's never been a formal program, but we don't want the funding to go away in the meantime. So we're working to keep that funding intact while they look at redesigning the program. It was kind of like a project of Riva Murphy, who was the head of the Child Development Division, and she kind of like figured it out on the side, but it needs to be a formalized program. The other thing that I want to mention, workforce development and the technical centers. I would say that if there, I mean, and Bob will speak to this certainly because this is commerce on his committee, but there is such an awareness among legislators across parties about this issue of workforce, of technical centers and their amazing possibility in terms of really training, especially those kiddos who just don't want to sit in a seat, you know, and kind of follow the traditional learning method that, you know, we have in our schools. We need to, we need to figure this out. We got to crack this nut. I mean, there's no question about it. And the schools developing their own programs, that's new information for me. I wasn't aware of that competitive piece. So that's something that we need to take into account and figure out. We are going to be doing more on workforce, I believe, this year on the childcare. We addressed the subsidy levels for childcare, and we gave some incentives to workers, but we need to do more on the worker end in terms of raising wages because we can't get the workforce. But I worked for a good part of my career with Vermont Works for Women. So like, there's no, no bigger advocate for technical centers. You know, like, I just think they are so amazing, the work that they do in preparing kids. And we have to figure out how to create that pipeline into our workforce because you're right, the kiddos who go through those programs are the ones that stay, absolutely. And also, the integration with Vermont Technical College, like that piece, you know. It's all, again, it's about creating these, these systems that run one to the other where there's a good handoff from each piece. And, you know, it's a lot of moving parts. Let's see, what else? Mental health, Lori, you've covered that. Oh, I wanted to say one thing about, or two more things. One is, in terms of prevention, that wasn't mentioned here, but that's something that my committee has been really involved in over the last, over this biennium, really. And that is, we have people who are kind of siloed in prevention areas in terms of substances, who look at tobacco or are focused on opioids or focused on alcohol. And what we've done the last session is bring all of that together into an integrated chief prevention officer. And that person is going to sit in the governor's office. So there's going to be a person whose job is to really look at upstream prevention relative to substance misuse and suicide, too, at the level of the governor's office. So I just wanted to say that because that's, none of that we can see nor have you heard about yet. And our goal is to really put like a lot of money into prevention, like really trying to work at these things upstream through education and a whole variety through the schools. So that work is continuing this session as well. And then the last thing I'll say is, I mean, much of my work on Human Services, it's slightly frustrating because I'm a very aspirational person. I'm like someone who wants to be thinking about, like, visioning forward in what we can do. do. And I know Lori's experienced this on healthcare this past session. A lot of our work has been like trying to protect things that people are trying to take away. I mean, we spend a lot of our time. I know in Human Services, a lot of my time is spent talking to advocates and trying to preserve the social safety net, you know, aspects of the social safety net that people want to kind of carve away and don't think just because all of the funding wasn't used, they think, oh, it's not needed, instead of diving deeper into, well, what's the issue? And a lot of times it's a workforce issue or it's, there are other issues that are contributing to the underutilization of funding. So a lot of my work has been really trying to preserve, you know, funding for mental health and, you know, funding for like the 211 line, for example. That's a classic example of the administration deciding, oh, we don't get many calls from 8:00 PM to 8:00 AM. Well, it ends up, when you dig into the numbers, 40% of our calls for emergency housing come in those hours. So that has been a lot of my work and it kind of keeps me from more aspirational stuff, but I'll be damned if I'm going to get to the aspirational piece. But for now, that's, that's a lot of where, so trying to make sure that net is there so that those things don't spill over into educational settings or they're minimized. So I'll stop there and let Bob.
Thanks.
What the forum said.
We're not letting you off the hook that easy.
I sure do hope that the federal government does something on infrastructure because I think the chances of putting a lot of money into school funding, infrastructure for schools is not good. I have many of you probably know that Moody's has downgraded us. And so it's going to cost the state millions of dollars to borrow money. Moody's has said that we're up against, we've, we've reached tax capacity, at least that's how they define it. So we don't have much ability to borrow. If we try to borrow a lot more and then Moody's is going to downgrade us even more and the interest rates are going to become even higher and it's going to cost, it's going to siphon off millions of dollars to go to other social programs. So I, I certainly do hope that the feds will do something because that's too courage that we're not going to be able to do much at the state level. The other issue that I want to talk about is the technical education. As Mary Beth said, that I'm on Commerce, Economic Development, and I would say that that was the number one issue, the one we spent the most amount of time this last session was on workforce development. And a big part of that was vocational education. And which, which goes, discussed it from, from the junior high level all the way to Vermont Tech. And how we can streamline that and make, make a better system. We even took a trip to Barry's Voc Tech, and that was very enlightening for everybody and quoting myself. With that said, I, I would like to have a more in-depth discussion of the, I think I've referred to as, and I'm not aware of it, the comprehensive technical model. I'd like to see that because I do think there's some problems integrating it. One of the, one of the things that we heard over and over again in our committee is the need to move things back into the junior high. Part of this was in the, well, there were a couple of different issues, but one of them was the sort of the stigma that goes with being in, in technical, and trying to remove some of that. And then also to make both, both young adults and their parents aware of the opportunities. Quite frankly, if you have a child that likes hands-on stuff, encourage him to be electrician because after six or seven years, his education is going to be all paid for by the company. It's going to be making, he or she, he'll make a hundred thousand dollars a year. And you can take that money you're going to pay for college and help him buy a house. And they'll probably stay in Vermont. So this is what's so critical about that is that one of the governor's initiatives has been how we attract people in here, and it's been one of the issues that has been of utmost importance to me since I've got a legislature about five, six years ago. We need to grow the size of the state. If we don't, we're not going to be able to fund the programs we have now. So we need to expand business, we need to get employees, and there's, there's, there's several facets to it, housing is, is a big, big issue in that. But also workforce training. So I, and I'm sure that that's going to be another, one of our biggest issues in our committee again this year, but this is something that I, I, I need to get a little more in-depth into it because I think it needs to be coordinated with, with the education committees to see how we can restructure that and come up with something that, that fulfills the needs and maybe it'll be even more cost-effective.
Thanks. Any final questions or comments from board members?
So I guess one of the questions I have that none of you addressed tonight in depth was whether you share some of our concerns about the capacity at the agency of education level in terms of providing support for local districts. Do you share that concern? Is that something that you, did that resonate with any of you?
Yes.
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 I have to, I'm quite eager of that, the issues that you're having with AOE. So I can't say that I am aware of.
In my Human Services Committee, we interface a lot with the education, with AOE, and frustrations are very much what you described.
I think the way I would ask the question is, Dylan, do you see any interest on the part of the legislature actually trying to address the capacity issues?
I think right now there's an understanding in the Education Committee that the reductions in workforce that we saw during the Great Recession, none of it's been restored. And so there were programmatic changes and the staff that how, that oversaw programs such as construction support and things of that nature no longer exist. I think that the, the piece that's particularly challenging is the number of initiatives that were enacted in the 2012 to 2015 range put all sorts of programmatic development pressures on local districts. And so when I look at, at this particular school district, I look around, I'm like, wow, look at all this cool stuff we have. And then I go to other parts of the state and I say, how are they achieving the goals of these really ambitious, aspirational acts that have been enacted? So to the question, you know, we've talked about adding a full-time employee here or there for an initiative such as we've looked at things like providing support and creating a grant program for technical education in the middle school years, which come to think of it might have some unintended consequences. And we've talked about maybe a person here, or we've looked at things like, whoa, we got a real problem with the rollout of some of the technical systems, the uniform chart of accounts and other things, maybe we need to put more person power there. I would be lying if I said we have a comprehensive staffing plan for the agency of education. In fact, we held a joint hearing with the Senate last year on this very topic and put the secretary in the hot seat and said, what are you doing? And frankly, it was too soon in a way, he hadn't been there long. I think we need to start that conversation again. And it's not about pointing the finger, it's more about having a realistic conversation about is an agency that used to have, I don't know what it was, 140 people that's down to 80, is that adequate when we've added all these unfunded mandates on locals?
Yeah.
Because that's the reality. And, you know, across state government, we have the staffing conversation. The other piece that we've heard from the agency is we can't recruit folks. And if you think about it, their workforce is largely people who have worked in the education system who decide to go into state service after teaching for a time because they want a change in career. They bring the professional background, which you really need in the realm of education, and they understand and can do things like program development if it's developing proficiencies or whatever it may be. But the state is having a challenge recruiting. And while the, the benefits and the compensation are quite good at the state, we have similar workforce pressures that we're seeing in other industries as well. So it's almost a perfect storm. I do think we'll continue to provide oversight, but do we have line items ready for the budget where we're going to add 10, 20 people? No. And in fact, I'm, I'm concerned just because the staff turnover we've seen, those are highly skilled positions at the agency. You know, people who have worked in, in special education, gone. The, the short-term finance director who was phenomenal, the chief finance officer, gone, jumped to another agency. So there's, there's a culture challenge, there's a reorganizational challenge underway. And I, I'm hopeful that we can find the balance. But clearly, as long as you put some wind at our backs, the word, I think, will get around, we got a real problem. And if it's just the business functions that are going off the rails, I could see how some people might turn a blind eye. But when it's the business functions, the special education functions, when it's proficiencies, when it's all this stuff and no one's actually tending the ship, all we're doing is acting as a compliance agency with the federal government, we have a problem.
Okay. I'm very cognizant of the time, although a couple more hopefully quick ones.
I think in order to help you on setting some of those priorities, and, and I don't see anyone really doing this, but what are the areas of the state that are the economic drivers in terms of revenue and taxes for the state? And clearly Chittenden County is a major contributor. And when I look around at infrastructure and support for what we get, it, it's just disappointing and I don't understand why that is. But I think in terms of looking at things a different way is where do we get that, the financial support? And what are the needs of this region to make it even stronger? That priority setting is not there. Clearly, it's been my experience. The second point.
Can I just ask you to, like, are you, are you talking at the school, like, school level? What are you?
School levels, development, infrastructure, roads.
Okay, okay.
It's, it's abroad, it's across the board. It's like, well, what are the state priorities? It's everything. Well, it needs to be focused and it's not. The other aspect of this is I've sat in this chair for a long time through many boards. This, these issues with AOE are not new and they're not going away. And the current job and economic opportunities elsewhere are continuing to rise. So with 7.2 million jobs now open in the United States, I don't, I don't think it's going to get any better. In fact, it's going to go the other way. So in retrospect of all of this, I think it's very important that we stop and think about not only these deficiencies, these deficiencies of whether or not it's staff serving. If you don't have a, a happy and contributing and motivated staff, where does that leave you? I, I'm at the point where I can look at this list and say, forget AOE, we'll just fund it, whatever it costs, we'll go fund our own surveys, do our own thing here and not rely on them because they're not being responsive. So if you could do anything with Dan French, I'd say give him one priority or two priorities and hold him accountable. Otherwise, he needs to be evaluated appropriately. That's the message, drop the hammer. I'm just fed up with waiting for AOE to do things. Thank you for your time.
I want to respond to your first one about the Chittenden County envy. And we are, there's a lot of jealousy.
Yeah.
The rest of the state's got other problems, but, you know, they, anything that goes to Chittenden County, it's, oh, it's taking an out.
Yeah.
I was not the breakfast for the Chittenden County Regional Planning Commission, and that, that issue was brought up and they had some statistics about. A lot of infrastructure work was being done in Chittenden County, it needs to be the rest of the state.
Right.
Given a second mention, and it's, it's quite dismal. But that's what you're kind of going up against as the rest of the state says, wow, you guys are, got it great, we don't.
That'd be a very prominent attitude in the legislature. We could talk all night. Unfortunately, we have very long agenda ahead of us. We thank you so much for taking the time to come, for thinking about the things that have, the issues that we've raised. We hope you'll stay in touch during the session. We'll certainly stay in touch with you. And drive carefully and have a good, happy day or a great session.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So thoughtfully, it's really, it's super helpful if something we can refer to an eyeball like as issues come up. So it's really, really helpful. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so we have a lot of work in front of us. I neglected at the beginning, are we all set? This is hard. I neglected at the beginning of the meeting to add two items to the agenda. Without objection, I'd like to add an item, a proclamation for Ben Scannella, who's retiring at the end of the month. I sent you a copy and email today. I hope you've had a chance to look at it. And the second thing we need to add to the agenda is at the last, last meeting, we said we would talk tonight about budget guidance specifically on making our lunch program available to all. So I'll think those in somewhere under your school board fitness. So let's go back to the consent agenda. We have a consent agenda. We have it in front of you. Does anyone need to pull anything from the consent agenda? Entertaining motion now, we approve consent agenda consisting of minutes from December 3rd, December 5th, and December 10th. The approval of Lawrence and the approval of a professional appointment to a science physician at PDL for the remainder of this meeting.
So moved.
Thanks, Bill. Any, no, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Thank you. All right, so, Bill's Voices for Education update.
You have a clicker.
I'm going to ask Ben if he'd have come up, and Erin McGuire is here too, you don't have to come up, but if you want to. So we just wanted to give you an update of where we are. We, um, we just wanted to give you an update of where we are with Voices. We're in a slightly different phase, we're transitioning into, into a new, really, we think, exciting time for what we, for the work we've done. And we're, we wanted to let, make sure the board knew the direction we were moving and the intentions for that. So Ben, want to talk through the goals that we came up with? We've been through these before, but we'll just briefly review where we are.
So I'll give you a second to read the goals, but these are something that we came up with about three years ago when Voices for, or actually when we received the Nellie May Grant, I think most of you were on the board at that time. And pretty soon into that, like, we came up with these three goals, so just give you a quick second to read them. So you'll see in the third goal, there's an extra bullet at the bottom. We're going to talk about this a little bit more as we go, but that piece is going to change with the shift that we're talking about tonight. You'll see in that third bullet, it starts with EWSD will provide regular opportunities, and we're changing that slightly to DFE will support opportunities. But like I said, these goals have been there since the beginning, they haven't really changed. There's just going to be some minor shifts in how we operate business here.
So, one of the reasons we have decided to move in this direction is because we had this great opportunity when we came as a group to work on the vision, and that was a really perfect use of the grant money and of the community and the student, and all working together on doing that. In that time, we were able to train 23 students and adult facilitators. We helped improve student voice, which included working with students, facilitated equity conferences. We now have Laura and Tilly serving on our board and are thrilled to have student reps part of our culture. We reached out to the community and talked to many, many people about that led to the vision that you see here in front of us. We hosted the summit that you all were part of, and we provided engagement support for all kinds of conversations in the community as they related to Essex, to education and to the district. We are working with committees, working to help communities and in the community that are doing work that is aligned with the objectives of the Voices work. So, one of those is the Essex-Westford Equity Committee that came directly out of the work from the summit, where a bunch of community members specifically wanted to focus on issues of racial and social justice. And so, the Voices for Education team kind of split, where one group was working specifically on school issues, and the other group was working wider on community issues. And Erin McGuire and Karen Dolan from the Community Justice Center are doing a really wonderful job. She'll talk about that in a minute. But these are the kinds of things that we've done that have gotten us to this point, and what we realize and recognize is that what we want to do now is build those, improve those school-community relations and do what we can so that we think, start really organically thinking of ourselves as the whole school, whole community. And where initiatives exist in the community that are doing that work, our job will be to support that, to support that, those efforts.
Just want to add a couple of quick things. Those last two slides, I think you see students come up a lot, and I think that's been a big shift and change for the better. With this grant that we received that ended last December?
Yep.
Yeah, so it's now been about four years, but to me, the biggest thing was a change of culture. I've been here for six or seven years, and I think we've changed from constantly telling people to trying to ask people when we can, ask the community. You can't always, you can't always have it that way. Some things, we're just, we might get something from the state that we have to do. But whenever we can, we try to reach out and involve especially students, especially community. And I think that's really changed, both I see at the administration level, but also at the board level, too. Prime example, the board's had a couple engagement events in the last year, just obviously pie and pie charts the other night. And I think those little things help, and they build that, the extra layer of trust with the community and make it more of a us instead of a us and them.
Yeah, and just briefly back to pie and pie charts, even though there are very few people who actually came out, it really is making impact. Ben was at a conference where people were thinking, that's a cool idea. And I think that the more that we can try those things and the more we can start to say, what can we do that's exciting and that we can start building into our culture is really what we're talking about. So, Ben, you want to talk about that shift?
So, we've talked about it a little bit, but the main shift is Voices in the past, the last three and a half years, has been in a system where we meet at least once a month. It's a scheduled meeting, and for the first few years, we had a lot of topics. I mean, we just went through all the accomplishments. There's a lot of things we did. As times wound on, and I think the culture has changed, there's less of a need for Voices to be consistently. And it got to the point where often we're looking for things to do, instead of having things come to us or having a list of things that we just couldn't, you know, finally get to. And so, we've decided to try to shift that a little bit and change. Instead of having this structure where we meet monthly and we're out looking for topics, now we provide, you know, we're thinking about providing grants for community events or school and community events combined that fit with the vision and with the district and how we do things. Just not only grants, but we'll still have the technical assistance, we'll still have Voices for Education as a group that can help out.
No, no.
And the second part is just, like I said, continuing to develop these engagement efforts. I think Voices, over the years, has trained a lot of people, trained people to facilitate, trained people within the school district, but we're still going to be there to help out, you know, whenever we can and still carry this on.
So, we have two real good examples of that. Did you have something you wanted to say, Erin, at this point? We have two things that we're working on now, and one of them is, it's, do you want to start with me?
Yeah, so I feel like I can give, I mean, the example of the committee work that's from.
Sure.
So, as a person who was part of Voices for Education, really from the beginning, kind of all the way through, the community group that has formed around equity is a direct result of that work and is now engaging in engagement work, but it is not Voices for Education anymore. It is its own group. And so, that's the, yes, the Voices for Inclusion in Essex and Westford, and wow, you've got that in there. I just sent this email out today. That's impressive, Liz. So, the purpose of the, this is, we just named ourselves last week, have been sort of searching and thinking about names, and so, the group will be Voices for Inclusion in Essex and Westford. And we have agreed to begin three new engagements with the community, the partnership between EWSD and CJC. The first engagement session will focus on racial justice. The second one will focus on refugee and immigration issues. And the third focused forum will be around LGBTQIA+ challenges in our community. But those events take some money. And so, as we were thinking about the future of how we can continue to grow engagement, this is an example of how Voices for Education can continue to grow engagement, not just as Voices for Education, but into new groups that are now engaging in different and new ways. And so, we're in the process of planning a movie screening and a high-quality dialogue with skilled facilitators as it relates to race and racial justice in the communities in which we live. Really looking forward to that, but we need some funding to do that. And so, we're talking with Voices for Education about how might we seed some money to help with skilled facilitation. That's not a topic that you take on without really skilled facilitation, and skilled facilitation is not free. And so, wanting to make sure that we find ways to continue that quality engagement that we were taught so clearly from the Nellie May grant through examples like this.
And continue to recruit and foster people and students, young people especially, and to do that training and to get that ingrained so that when these guys, when they leave, our leaders are still in place. And some of the intention of this work going forward is to do that as well. So, Voices would offer the facilitator trainings, and we'd be able to design the meetings and that. So, we're really excited that this group has really taken off. It really was a strong desire from that summit, as many of you remember. And the other thing that is really exciting that we're doing is an event called Gather at the Table. It's on Facebook now, if you can find it there, and a website will be out soon. But Voices has committed to funding, helping to support this event, as have the Child Nutrition Center here at Essex-Westford School District, Town of Essex, Village of Essex Junction, the Town of Westford, the Committee for Westford Children and Families, Essex Pond Resort, Mansfield Place, Larkin Hospitality, and Triangle Design. Thank you, all of you. And it's really so exciting to us that our requests have been so well-received and that the effort to have a gathering that you can see is completely free and intended really for us to just gather with no agenda, no facilitator, no turn and talks, much as I love my turn and talks. No Sharpies, no sticky dots, just our idea is really to try to do this goal of improving school-community relations and having celebratory time. And so, we hope that you all will be there at the event for sure, and there's a sign-up for you that will be around, and we're going to try to get our selectmen and trustees and our elected officials all to volunteer to be there and be part of the event and to really celebrate who we are as a larger community. And this is the kind of thing that we're hoping to do moving forward with the Voices work. And one more thing is I just want to say a big thanks to Ben, because Ben does a ton of work to make this Voices work happen and his leadership in this initiative and in many other things he does for the district is really just fantastic. A pleasure to work with Ben, and he's really one of the leaders of this work. So, thank you.
Yes. Thank you. Questions or comments for Liz?
For Ben or Erin?
I like the way this is evolving, and I'll be really interested to be part of and a representative of how it continues.
Great.
Okay.
Pat, did you have a question?
I did for a second, but I actually think I can.
Okay.
Yeah.
Brendan?
I just have a comment. I just want to thank Liz and the folks who've been involved in Voices for Education. You know, it was an idea that took some of us a little time to wrap our heads around, but it has, you know, sort of reflecting tonight on all that it has accomplished and the many conversations that it instigated, I think has been really great, and it's exciting to think about next steps. So, thank you.
Thanks, Ben.
Okay.
Just in the funding hat, since we are done with our grant, I think it will be great for our communities to understand that it is funded through our budget because it's a commitment of our district to support engagement as a function of our culture. And even with those events, this is happening within our district, but those that are happening with the other equity inclusion group, I think it'll be important to have folks understand that, because sometimes they may not make that direct link.
Yeah.
I'm grateful for the support.
Can I ask anything else? All right. So, let's move on to, thank you, Liz, thank you, Ben.
Thanks, Erin.
Take a cookie for the road.
Thank you, Mike, for the cookies.
I think I said a couple of years I wasn't going to do it anymore, but I can't seem to stop doing it.
Perfect.
All right, governance. So, last time we met, we, not our budget session, but I think it's the third, we had a confering opportunity with Val Governor. We need to make a governance decision. It will be on our first meeting in January agenda to decide. So, tonight is an opportunity to reflect on our conversations with Val and to see what questions you still have about policy governance. The vote in January will be whether to accept the recommendation of the Governance Task Team. Well, actually, no, because the Governance Task Team just said explore it. So, the decision will be, do we want to move to policy governance or not? Okay. So, thoughts, questions, things that need clarification before we get to a point of deciding?
We really haven't had too many opportunities to discuss as a board the pros and cons of this that we see. So, I would like to see some board time just for that discussion, open discussion.
I think this is the opportunity.
Okay. So, I haven't made a decision on it. I think it could work, but I'm not opposed to it, but I'm not 100% know that I want to go into it, so.
Other thoughts and comments and questions?
You know, we talked a lot about data, reporting, ends and means, but I, we haven't put anything down on paper to see if it really meets all of our board, you know, and get the input of the rest of the board, where those limitations lie for the superintendent, where we want to take action. I haven't seen any real good examples of that yet.
So, I think if you go, you could certainly do that. If you adopt policy governance, that's part of what you do.
Of the work.
That's, yes. That's part of the work of policy governance. Other comments, thoughts?
I'd like to see us really do some work on this before we make that decision. Take a particular area, any area, write, you know, define what that, what that ends and means are going to be, how it would work, just as an exercise, and see if that is the way we want to go.
I'm wondering...
Brendan, do you have a response to that? I don't, sort of feel like that's how it works, but...
Well, I mean, so I feel like, I mean, Al's asking very good questions, and I think that the challenge with going to any governance model is that you can't predict necessarily how well the board is going to implement it.
Oh, yeah.
So, as much as we'd love to say, it's going to be perfectly smooth and everything's going to work out great, you know, it really depends on the work that the board puts into the effort.
Yeah.
Part of what Val tried to do, I think, in her discussion with us last time, was to give us at least a sense or a feel of what some of that work would, how it would be different, you know, in policy governance versus a more traditional governance model. But, you know, this is the time to raise your concerns or your questions about whether or not this direction is the right one for our board or not. And I think the challenging part is, is that if we had a crystal ball and we could tell you exactly how it was going to all sugar off, it would make the decision a lot easier. But, you know, a big part of the success of policy governance is the work that the board puts into the effort. So...
So, now, from the previous meetings, it seemed like you would implement this over a period of time.
Yes. Yeah. I mean, the board would have to work to develop the executive limitations. I mean, all the pieces of policy governance would have to be developed by the board, or if the chair decided, a subcommittee, the board could focus on the work and bring it to the full board. But all of those things would be defined by us.
But also, we would make an investment in having someone help us through that process. So, if we move in this direction, we'll be investing some money to help us do good as well as possible.
And time.
I mean, I think it was the feeling of the committee that in order to achieve what we need to achieve to formalize our governance, even if we don't choose policy governance, it would be wise for the board to seek some sort of facilitation from someone as we work to formalize the things. Like, if we aren't talking about policy governance ends, we still need to be more clear about what outcomes we want and how we monitor to see if we're achieving them. So, it's not like it's free and we do nothing if we don't... So, it's not like it's free and we do nothing if we don't choose policy governance. It's, we have more sort of creative freedom in how we describe what we're doing. But, we also have like a less clearly defined process to follow.
Kim?
I was just trying to see if I could find an example where the policy is there and the monitoring report. So, Winuski School District, and I can send the link if it's helpful, you could see what their monitoring reports look like for each of the policies. It looks like each of them are relatively current. Like, I think they said they don't monitor all of them every single year. And it would give you an example, like Al with the ends, it shows you all the data they use to support their global end statement.
Okay.
And then, under each of them similarly, like each of the components of that policy, they express compliance and this is the evidence they use to demonstrate compliance. So, it's their monitoring reports for each section. It might give you more clarity around what it might look like. I think the need to know what our policies will stay or what evidence we'll use is further down the process. So, but looking at an example, I think could be really helpful. And they are somewhat mature in their processing and fairly disciplined to their approach.
The other thing that's available, I think, Al, is there is a whole book from the Essex Town School District that has all of the policies and the monitoring reports. No, I'm just saying, there's one. So, that has it. So, if someone's interested in.
I might have one, but I think mine may not have had all the most current. I think what we did with the one that I gave to Beth as we were closing up shop was print out from the website at the time, which then I think Lorna had made sure had all of the most current monitoring reports. So, the last round of reports from ETSD that accompanied each of those policies would be there. And I think it's helpful to see the example, whether it is ETSD or Winuski, or if there are others that are, have been through a cycle of monitoring. I just don't know. I think Winuski is a pretty good example of having done it with discipline. So, that might be helpful to see what it might look like.
Yeah, it is. Maybe we could make that resource available. Is it available online?
This is a link, so I.
It's not online. It's an actual binder that's in my office.
You live pretty close to our office.
I'm sure that the Essex Town examples would be even clearer for all of us since we have
a pretty thorough knowledge of Essex Town, but Lorna did send us all the Barstow full set of policy governance policies back on September 9th. Was that helpful or unhelpful to you?
Yeah, it would.
And you received it. You emailed her back, "Thank you." So, I was just wondering if that was something that was helpful or if it wasn't, what other sort of information.
I remember reading part of it, but I couldn't, something else happened and we got diverted again. So, yeah, maybe you could point me back to.
Okay.
It was from Lorna on September 9th.
Right.
September 9th?
Yeah.
Other thoughts and questions? Patrick?
I think I have two. One, I think it's really strictly for Beth. This is a huge amount of work for you. Obviously, you know, we're, if we make this move, this is something that we're looking at, you know, for continuance in the future going forward, you know, for, you know, however many superintendents for the rest of the district. But, for me, it does matter if we're going to be making this change and putting too much on your plate to then, you know, I mean, I don't want to set you up to fail because, you know, you have all this stuff going on right now. We're in year two, or excuse me, you know, going into three of a new district. And then, all of a sudden, we're also asking you to switch to policy governance.
Yeah.
That's a concern of mine and, you know, I would like to know your thoughts, like, in all honesty, not like the diplomatic answer. Yeah, but like, you know, if, but if you're worried about it, like, that's something that I'm going to take the heart when I'm trying to make this decision.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. It is, it would definitely become a priority, but I work with a great team that can handle other things while I make it a priority. And I did let the governance task team know that I would be very willing to go that way with the board supports and know that I'm learning as well as we go. So, but it definitely would become a priority if you choose to go that way. And I'm okay with it.
Okay.
I appreciate your concerns.
And I guess the second thing is that the, what I've heard from people who've come and talked to us about policy governance is that they've mentioned specifically is that if we go this route, that there should be a total buy-in, that the whole board should be really invested in doing this. Otherwise, I think one quote was that you really shouldn't bother. I may be speaking out of turn, but I'm not getting the feeling that there is complete buy-in from everyone on this board, that this is the way we want to go. I think that some people are very interested in doing it, some people are, you know, okay if we do and okay if we don't. And I don't know if that's enough commitment for the amount of work that there is. So, I don't know if, yeah, I'm just sort of, I don't have a solution. I guess I'm just putting these thoughts out there because for me at least, if, you know, I know that, like, you know, Kim, you know, could probably drag all of us across the finish line of policy governance.
That sounds fun. Just say it right.
Uh, you know, but, you know, because, I mean, she's, you know, she's that skilled, but I don't.
Now, you're really piling on.
It's a, it's a, I, it's a compliment. But, I, you know, I do, I guess I do have some concerns about whether or not, you know, if the rest of us, you know, are not feeling as strongly about adopting it, whether or not, it's, it's just the right way to go at this time.
Todd?
Sure. Yeah, I think if we were to do the retreat we did in September now, I don't think governance would have risen to my list as a priority. I'm not sure, or I'm actually pretty sure that I don't think I'd really want to jump to a whole new model without really taking a good look at sort of the existing model and maybe shoring it up. I just think there's, as time has gone on, there's, I think there's probably other things we could focus on and if we didn't do it, I'd be totally fine. I think I'd sort of be relieved and would rather look at how do we shore up what we have and look at some of the bigger issues that maybe could have more impact on the student body.
I think that's something we can talk about and then I'll come back to you.
I guess if there's any hesitancy on my part exhibiting, it's more because of not truly understanding it and also some of the past experiences are, they walked away with understanding that A is going to equal B and then find out that the actual delivery is that A equals C. It's not saying there's any misleading, but there's some misinformation that's come around and that's, I just want to continue to understand it more because I raised some questions and I apologize that I wasn't here to hear the answers, but hearing Kim speak about the policies and then Winuski having evidences, is the evidences presented like by the administration as to what they're adhering to? And then, the board evaluates whether the evidences are acceptable or not? And if they're not, what's the recourse to that? It's those type of questions. I get into those details as to what is the recourse to policy governance if it's not working as it should? Do we go back? Do we stay in, continue to tweak it? Those are questions and they're valuable questions because we're changing the governance model or looking at changing it.
Kelly?
My understanding of the question of buy-in is not, is every single person at the table ready to worship John Carver as their personal savior? It's, is every person at the table okay with the idea that we're actually going to do policy governance and we're not going to do 60% of policy governance? So, I can be like, I don't care if we do policy governance, but if the board votes to do policy governance, then I support fully implementing policy governance and I will get trained and participate in identifying the ends in all the monitoring systems. What would be a bad idea would be for us to be like, we're going to do the things we like from policy governance. Because then we should just say, we're going to do the things that we like and we have to sit down and formalize them without using this other system.
I guess I maybe took a different impression from that. I, I was under the impression that we should all kind of be excited about it if we're going to go to it, that there shouldn't be half of us who are like, you know, if we're going to do it, then we're going to do it.
Despite being on the governance committee, there is no system of governance that would make me excited. So, that is not going to happen.
We try.
Clearly, Kim and Brendan are passionate about governance.
You know, just to reiterate something that Kelly said earlier and to sort of also underscore what Todd said, it's not so much about policy governance, is this board going to commit to itself and to its community that it's going to work to get better? And whether we do that through policy governance or not, this board can be better than it is today. And that's something that this board needs to commit itself to and get excited about. And so, whether or not we decide to use policy governance as the framework for making that happen, the committee basically said, we need to commit as a board to improving our governance.
Yes, we need, we need a framework. So, we need to decide which one or what model, what, what form, whatever, we need to decide. There, as Todd has mentioned, we could indeed shore up what we currently have. There are pieces, you know, that we could improve on. Okay, administration boards, yes, the communication, information to exchange, et cetera, et cetera. You know, it's, it's commitment. Okay, what, what model, okay, what crutch, okay, in this case, what crutch do we want to use? What framework do we want to use to get us to work better? And it's, it's something I think we need to decide to do, okay, because we want to have the best for our community. And if we're not working at our best, that means we're not putting our best into this school either. So, what is going to drive us to be better? What is going to drive, you know, the people we employ to be better so that we get the results we want? Gosh, that sounds like an ends report. Okay, I hate the word ends, by the way. Okay, results works for me. So, you know, I guess I'm results driven, okay? What result am I wanting and what do we need to go through to get it? So, you know, I mean, I drive to Montpelier just like you guys do to bed and yak it people, okay, to get something for our kids up here. So, I don't have to drive to Montpelier. It's, you know, it's two miles away from my home. So, you know, what are we willing to commit to do? I guess is, you know, and I do have reservations. I've had worked under high performing boards in the past. And it's different having all of you guys here in Essex Junction, okay? And it's lovely that we're all here, okay, to be perfectly honest, okay? We're better for being our multiple town, village, whatever government. It's hard. It's like we went to Zed Holly's, there aren't municipalities. But anyhow, it's, I look as being is that we signed up to try to get things best for our kids. What are we willing to step up besides getting elected to be able to do that? Okay, reservations or no, okay, it's, it's time, I guess you say, pony up, either ante in or get out of the game. So, okay.
Get into a different game.
Or get into a different game. So.
Okay. Kim?
Absolutely no desire to carry anyone anywhere.
I'm sorry. Wait, I phrased, I phrased it wrong.
I get what you're saying.
I just know you're passionate.
Brendan and I have some familiarity and we can, you know, lend some experience to the situation. I think I do want to clarify, I, my, both my impression and our experience was that it wasn't a 5-0, wasn't even actually necessarily an active vote. It was a recognition when we chose at Essex Town that there were three of us that were new and two had served for years, many, many years. And when you come in new and you've just been trained on good governance in general, it caused us to just sort of pause. We had some policies that had been in a book like this forever on things that we didn't even own and it lent you to understand that they weren't policies, they were CYA sort of procedure things that came up because something must have happened 100 years ago on a facility we owned. And it, it was part of our good practice routine to be reviewing our policies, but that one clearly hadn't been reviewed in a long time and it, and what did that mean for students anyway? And, and so, in crafting the policies, it feels like it could give, if this is a framework we choose, one way or another, we should provide the next step down to what our vision would look like, what are the outcomes we're looking for, ends or otherwise? And then, what data supports that so that when Beth is providing data, it's in the context? And that was one of the things that in our experience, I felt that model provided for us was the so what? Not just isolated data pieces. It was that data supported the articulation of this desired outcome. And some of it was data that came by virtue of numbers. Sometimes it was observations or considered data as well or evidence, if you will, to that, the fact that we're moving in the direction of our vision. So, it might be that we have sort of four questions we're looking for or something when we attend the internship night or CTE honors programs or, so we, like at the middle school, it was like a tech day or something. And so, the questions prompted us to see if we could see our ends, if you will, in action. So, there's direct inspection. There's a few different versions of evidence that were more robust than just a data dump. And it was necessary that that evidence made a connection to what we were trying to accomplish. And then, in its full circle, it led us use that to articulate how the budget helped achieve the outcomes that were sought and ultimately the vision. So, for that, I very much so appreciated the structure. I think that piece is really important, even having the data group that I wasn't able to attend. But, identify indicators is really important. But, if we were to just get data and not understand what that's looking to achieve or how, what is that telling our professionals? We are still just getting data. So, whatever version we do to do that level, I think we're ready for that next step of asking our community to help us articulate the values and what would our vision look like if that were happening? Engage with them on that, that would be the biggest body of work and those would like come over time. It took us a while. We probably did all the other policies first because they're more formulaic and they let us sort of know that we're financially sound because we're getting quarterly reports on our finances and, and it's just, in some cases, it's an affirmation, in some cases, it's an ask, like what's the evidence that we're treating our staff well? Well, so maybe we get a report on the grievances or not grievances, or maybe there's a staff culture report, you know? That evidence might look different year to year, but it means we're intentionally focusing on that question. So, those categories, I don't, I don't want to make, I apologize, I don't want to make a lecture out of it. I'm just saying why those, that sort of structure was helpful because we kind of got what we were looking for in context, in a so what sort of way. So, and that we could build bowls that are deeper if there are areas that any number of us, like a majority of us, feel like, okay, that's fine, treatment of staff is fine, but we really are very specifically looking for this, then that becomes a subcategory that we will get that specific information on. So, it, you know, that's how the process goes. It would be hard to tell you now, Al, what that will look like for us.
Exactly.
Exactly.
So, I, if I may, I'd like to share a few of the things that I'm thinking. It was surprising that policy governance has, despite the many learning opportunities I've been through, hasn't excited me, except for the ends policy and the concept of engaging the community, about what the community values and wants out of the education system, setting up the who's, setting up the ends that we desire and figuring out what, how we're going to monitor or find the indicators that will tell us whether we're achieving those goals. That strikes a chord with me. The rest of it, every time I read it, read other people's reports, it just doesn't strike a chord. Second piece that's going through my head is if we were a board that was managing the district instead of governing the district, I'd be all in. Because I think this is a framework that gets you away from managing the district. I don't think we're, with the exception of transportation, I don't think that is a problem that we have. Do, could we be better? Of course, we could be better. And it's something we can always work on. Another piece that goes through my mind is what Katelyn and Pat were talking about. If it's the will of the board to do this, then I am all in, in terms of doing it right. I have concerns that so many people that I've heard talk about policy governance are all in until it's not convenient to be all in. So, I worry that even if we had been in policy governance, we would have been, we would have moved into the administration role when the transportation problem happened. And I think I trust us not to do what some boards have done, which is to hold on to some things they've always done and kept them, like committee structures and things like that. I think if we decide to do this, I trust us to go all in, but it's going to take a lot of discipline, just as it does now, not to be in the, in the administrative role when it feels like our committee is upset or we are upset. So, that's just all the things that are going through my mind.
Yeah. I just had one comment, going back to Kim, on the meeting that Kim missed on the statistics and data collection and that sort of thing. I think one of the things that caught my attention was the data migration that has to occur throughout the year. We're migrating from Alpine back to Power School and for different grade levels, K5 versus 6, 7, 8, high school. So, there are going to be different reporting mechanisms, different exposures along that line, and we're going to be dependent upon accurate data reporting. And I haven't heard too much about that lately, but it's a concern because there are so many things that we might be dependent upon in terms of data reporting and it may be not, it may not be there when we do request it or need it, et cetera.
So, that's going to be true for your garden stuff.
This is a pretty, these are pretty big changes and these are big shifts in the data collection and the databases and how they're reporting. And from my previous experience with Power School, certain expertise and skills are also needed that are not going to be here for a while. So, I don't, I'm not quite sure about that aspect of it.
We'll start seeing him, Jim. All right. Any last comments on governance? I would say, I think if you think of further questions, it would be wise to reach out to me and I'll work with Brendan to get your questions answered.
I did send everyone.
Yeah.
I did send everybody the link.
Okay, thanks, appreciate it. All right, task team updates? Do we have any task teams that have been talked about already, uh, communication?
We have the press release, which we should mention, that went out to, that will be in the reporter this week. Did we, did we send it around?
It was sent, I believe, on the chain, the three principal model?
No, that's from Beth.
That's from Beth, all right.
I will share it, we should have.
It's called, 'Tis the season.
It's called, yeah, it's, it's called the most wonderful time of the year. Sorry, but that's what it's called. And it's about budgeting season and it does, similar to what the Williston Observer did in its, in its messaging about upcoming budget sessions, upcoming board meetings, it gives a, it's pretty short and to the point, but gives some information that we think is valuable for people who like to receive their information through the Essex Reporter. So, that will be here this week and that's it for communications, I think, for now.
Launch the budget page.
Oh, yep, and the budget page is launched.
So, the red button's there and the budget page is starting.
Yep, so.
And we had pie and pie charts since.
And, oh, since the last meeting?
I guess that was since the last normal meeting.
Budget session, where we talked about that. Yeah, but the budget is, thanks, on the homepage, a big red button now, so you can click there and Brian's keeping all those, the slide deck from the last one is new and improved and on there and so, so look for that budget button for any information you might have.
I don't know if this is the right segue here, but I know one of the issues with getting the people out to vote was because two of the communities traditionally voted on town meeting day.
Right.
And the third one voted in April and were held to the April, but I didn't know if there was any movement or trying to engage the community to shift it to a more common, like town meeting day.
So, I, we had that discussion and we decided that it would probably not make sense to make a move until we know what's going to happen with the merger discussion and what will happen with voting for them. So, we decided to postpone. So, actually, both Essex Town and Essex Junction voted in April. Westford was the only community that voted in March.
Oh, I was under the impression that Essex Town was on there.
Their town, so it's a town meeting day.
Thank you, thank you.
But their school did not. Okay, I'm going to move this along. Superintendent's report, we received it.
Yes, I'll just go through it quickly and if you have any questions. So, the first goal, having a significant impact on achieving, closing the achievement gap. I, the evidence of one of those messages or a message that came from me in November to the staff was just that, about closing the achievement gap and putting it out there that we have a large achievement gap. And we have been, as a leadership team, really looking at the data. So, that's evidence of that, working towards that goal. Our professional learning communities have been, I mean, they're in place to do that as well, looking at creating our viable curriculum first. In January, Jackie will come through the budget season and talk to you and share some data, the data that we've been looking at, that is, that will point out the achievement gap and why we're, where our instructional focus will be with third and fourth grade, the third grade reading and the fourth grade mathematics. We also, to close the gap, we had a two-day building diversity training. We had 50 of us, teachers, administrators, support staff. It was phenomenal, it was probably the best training that I've been to in my 30 years in being in education. And we hope to bring that back. I've had many teachers reach out and say, we need to have everybody in the district trained and that would be amazing, but building diversity would not be good for 700 people all at once. It really, 50 probably was a large group to do that in, but it was pretty amazing. We will be following through with that and having courageous conversations, so some of those people, I think we have 12 slots for people to continue and those people will then lead the equity work and be a leadership team within the district. So, we'll have support staff, teachers and administrators on that. We have quite a few people that are very interesting, interested in continuing that work. It was just, I can't, it was amazing. And as we build that and continue, it would be awesome to have you participate in those if you would like to take advantage of that work. It would be helpful as a board to do that as well. So, those opportunities, we're looking at in June and we're looking at next fall to do a few more. I showed up, I don't know if you know, but I facilitated a third grade PLC because I felt like I really wanted to step in to see what they're doing and really show teachers that I'm invested in them, so I take that time and it's really rolling up my sleeves and doing the work with the third grade team. But when I, when they all showed up, they were like, tell us about building diversity. They were so excited because they had heard a lot about it. So, it really is exciting work. And, let's see, goal two, to ensure a positive internal and external relationship by establishing effective collaboration. So, we have been having quite a significant presence in the Essex Reporter. We have a sign up sheet that directors will sign up to put something in, so it's either myself or another director and we work on those together. Jackie's last one that went in, I thought was really, really clear about professional learning communities and I liked the way that it was very readable and understandable. Should we send the same exact one to the staff so they would, they keep hearing it over and over and over? This is not going away. And then Erin McGuire, back in October, had one on equity. Did you say?
We were commenting about the not going away part.
We're, we're sticking with it. I've been working with Tilly and Laura with collaborating with the leadership team and so right now, they, tomorrow morning, we will be bright and early with the middle school principals and they have a plan to talk to them about what the work that they can do. I am also, I didn't get on here because it's happening and it'll be on the next report, but am going to use their skills and talents of getting student voice into the principal search with the Essex High School principal search. That just needs a little more fine tuning to figure that out, but I will report on that as we go. And goal three, the governance model supporting you, I put some evidence of the things that we have done and that I was a part of contributing to and the conversation with Val Gardner prior to the board meeting with Martha. That's showing my support. I do think that an ends policy or the portrait of a graduate would be amazing work, so whatever we do, that portrait of a graduate would really guide and help me as a superintendent to bring you evidence in meeting that. So, that's a piece that I'm really excited about with that. Let's see, goal four, implement newly created supervision and evaluation models. So, I have been working with the leadership team every time I meet, I know you know this, but I meet monthly with them and then I'm also in the buildings, 90 minutes, each school 90 minutes and extra 90 minutes. So, much of that 90 minutes in each building has been walkthroughs with the principals, working on feedback, going into classrooms with them and teachers know that we're learning this together and giving feedback, so it's been great for me to get into classrooms and work with the teachers on that. The Instructional Leadership Academy, we were in Westford, we go to Colchester in January and learning more about feedback. That academy is more for looking at a systems approach and professional development that teachers may need, or if you implement something, in Westford, we really focused in on writing. So, we were able to look K8 at a spectrum of how writing's being implemented, it was fascinating. And the evidence that we gathered was really helpful for Marcy, but we're also taking what we learn in the academy and applying it directly to our own supervision and evaluation and learning how to give feedback and collect evidence with no judgment, which is really hard. Because we all have things that we would judge on when we go, you can't help that, that's a human nature, but, so it's been really interesting. I will be working, I'm looking now for someone to do, an organization to do the search for Principal Reardon after his retirement. Right now, I'm working through a New England Association that does searches, I just got a price range, I'll bring more to you about that, but I'm really interested in going large and looking outside of Vermont. The people's names that I get have either in Vermont, have either worked here or done searches here already and I really, I just want to stretch beyond that, so, yeah. Ms. Patrick?
I know it's super early, but, you know, obviously diverse, or excuse me, diversity would be huge if we're looking at that.
It's one of the reasons why we have to step out of Vermont.
Yeah, out of Vermont.
Yes, I agree. So, around the budget and appropriate resources, I facilitated a full day, Brian and I did, I actually should have Brian's name and not, at the end of October, we focused a full day with the leadership team on budget and priorities. A lot of it was silent work, we did a technique called chalk talk where they write, stepped back, looked at it, prioritized. It was a great day of hard work and getting them to commit as a district on things and not hold tight to school, just school. It's, we're moving in that direction. The merger's been great for them to think about that. And every day, we get closer to making decisions as a team and not just thinking about the school level, which we have to do also, but when you're, when we're talking about a budget, we're really trying to bring them up above that, which is challenging, fun to do with them. We did work on offsetting social and emotional learning, which we will bring to you in that initiative from that Fund Balance in FY '20. So, I heard a comment the other, maybe it was the last meeting about the merger and if we're still, every time there's a retirement and what we do about that, we really do, and it was Kelly, we really do take it into consideration, both Brian and I do, whatever comes across, we think about. And I even talk to teacher, principals about it when I see a teacher, like is that the exact position you want to hire, is there something else, what do the numbers say? So, every time we have a retirement, that's what we're doing, whether it's support staff, teacher, administrator. And I did share with you what we did around that administration with the Director of Technology, changed that up some and we have interviews this weekend.
Good. I really appreciated seeing that and that you're trying to connect it to instruction because it's like on the one hand, this sort of position can get to be something where it's just like, how much money do we give to the Apple Corporation versus the Google Corporation?
Yeah.
But like, there were so many opportunities, I think, when people my age were in school, for students actually to be doing the technology work and learning and participating in it. And so, I think that those opportunities could still exist where if the Director of Technology has an eye toward instruction, identifying them would be.
Right, so this person will be on our, I call it the Directors of Instruction, so it's Erin and Jackie and Dylan and myself and Deb joins us, Brian joins us at times too, but this person will be a pretty intricate part of that team and working towards our continuous improvement. But I've been working on, we've been working on some interview questions and it's about that, like what are you going to do with technology, how are you going to help us get to our outcomes? So, yeah, it is exciting.
Thanks.
And then other, so I did put that memo in from And then other, so I did put that memo in from November, and I should have said to you before, I did not have a chance in November to share a November report with you, so I combined the December one as well. And then, so that memo from Secretary French. And then I did put in some happenings around, I don't think we really have time, usually I take you to the website and show you more into what's happening around this, I don't say this, the state, but it's our district. We've been in the news a lot, which has been really exciting.
It's exciting.
I've had people randomly from all over Vermont say, "Oh, I saw Essex on WCAX," or I'll get some parent that's reporting and very excited about. So that's, not only has Ben communicating things, but others are picking up on the great things that Essex is doing as well.
Kelly? I have a question related to, like, cool things that students are doing. Is there, like, a process to page Ben Dickey to an event?
You know?
Because Fleming had this amazing coffee house where, like, there were hundreds of people there watching, like, 16 ukulele players and, like, some choreography, and I don't think that anyone outside of Fleming knew about it.
I know. So they, this year, more than previous years, people do call Ben. Ben might have been out of district. He does, he's been leading, pretty, holding a significant role with other communication, people that hold the same job as he does in Vermont. He's become a real leader in that, which is exciting for him to take on that role. So there's some times that he's out. He's also doing a UVM course, but he does get called all the time, and he is, he's running places. The other day, I tried to get him to go to a movie with me, and I had to send him pictures because he was at Summit and Fleming and ADL, but, and the high school. So yes, but there's times that he's not here. So, but they do, the staff is really good about sending pictures now, what I have to do when he's not available to go with me somewhere. I take pictures and send them to him, so. Good things happening.
Other comments or questions, Diane?
You had a statement up under here that was underlined about Secretary French saying climate was indefinitely postponed. I know that we, as board, have talked about having a climate study. So is that in the budget we'll see next month? You know, is there some permutation of that to get that, that data that we desire to have?
So the equity survey that we did gave us some of that. I really am committed to give that survey one more time to see where it is before we fine-tune it or anything. We have been looking at other kinds of surveys around the climate, but right now, as a, as the instructional team, the directors, when we meet, we have been looking at other areas that gives us some idea of culture, like the youth surveys that they do. So we're, right now, we're piecing things together to get the culture. We have not, that doesn't help with our parents, though, but our equity survey, we do want to give again and see where we land.
I think with a definitive, yet disappointing declarative by the secretary.
Yeah.
It actually opens up a lot of avenues. There's a huge value in doing this as a state because we can benchmark across. If they're going to vacate that spot, there may be some real value in going to the Chittenden County superintendents, going maybe to a regional VSBA kind of realm, because that value is really important. And, and while Chittenden Central had adopted one, so it had a benchmark outside to national, again, we know that kind of importance of, like, neighbor, regional sentiment is pretty important, because when you get a six, you've got to understand what's the universe. If the universe was a five, you have a different response to it than.
And we do, as superintendents in Chittenden County, do want to discuss what, because we do want something.
This is pretty new news, so there has some time to adjust.
Thunder clouds building about. I, I know you've talked in the past about, like, not knowing if it's just one person or many people who are interested, so I want to concur with Diane that I would love to see progress forward on this. And I think the idea of teaming up with other schools in the county to hire a statistician or something to get, like, a truly normed survey, they get students, staff, and families, including access to people who don't speak English, is very important.
Yeah.
Because we have talked about it for a long time, and it's been this waiting game.
Yep.
And knowing that there are concrete steps we can take to make it happen sometime in the next two years would be awesome.
Yeah.
Two years? Six months.
So we just want to make sure whatever that, that indicator is that's being sought for that part of the report card.
Oh, right, from the state, on the snapshot.
On the snapshot, report card, whatever it's called. I'm sorry, yes, the snapshot. That, that is a category that is going to go unfilled while they have this culture, you know, whatever.
If Chittenden County does something.
Climate survey. So we should just make sure those indicators that are, you know, the federal government's looking for as well in that category.
Yeah.
Are being captured in whatever we use.
Yeah. That's.
That it feeds adequately.
Okay. Any other questions or comments for Beth?
Thanks, Beth.
You're welcome. Yeah, thanks. Liz, pass the cookies back.
But she got more votes than any of the rest of us.
See where the cookies ended up?
Okay. I'm going to stick the proclamation for months in here. Did everyone have a chance to look at it? Kelly?
There's one spare comma, and I didn't have it open, and something that could remove that.
Okay. Maybe you can make the correction not here and.
Yeah. So if I can get the signatures, I can, I can marry the signatures with the corrected document.
Okay. Does anybody object to this? All right. I'm going to pass it around for people to sign. Thank you.
Great. Well deserved.
Yes.
Thanks to Liz for suggestion. Okay, we need to, we said last time, we got into a discussion about providing universal access to lunch for all students in the district. And we said we would come back tonight to finish that discussion, and I think finish in the sense that deciding whether we wanted the administration to go further or to start investigating what the cost would be, what we wouldn't be able to do if we are going to do that, and those kinds of questions. So what are people thinking after having had a need to reflect?
At the last meeting, if I recall, there was a discussion on providing fully for K through eight regardless, or another one came about was to pick up for those that fell off the eligibility. And thinking then, I might go along the support of picking up the cost for those that are no longer eligible based on the new guidelines, being more prudent, because what will change is now they have to apply, and we establish the eligibility, and we honor that through federal. So I guess I might support more if we, rather than the providing for all, is provide for those that are no longer eligible based on the new guidelines.
Okay. I think we did have that discussion. I think Patrick's initial concern, and Patrick, you can probably explain better than I can, but it wasn't so much that issue as the issue, the food that students have access to is different if you are on free and reduced lunch than if you're not. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, correct. I mean, if you are on free and reduced lunch, you know, and you want, say, for example, seconds, you know, or if, you know, that has not been adequate enough, you're limited in the choices that you can go up and that you can get in addition to that. You know, there were a number of other reasons, you know, that I had for that, but it was, you're correct. I mean, I initially proposed K through eight, not a universal throughout the district. You know, I think that this is an excellent opportunity for us to potentially even lead by example. You know, maybe this becomes a statewide initiative, you know, but that's obviously, you know, sort of a further down the road thing. What it does do is that it, at its core, will ensure that every child K through eight who comes into our school is going to have a full meal in the day that they're going to have access to. They're not going to be hungry. It's not going to be an impediment for learning for them, which we know is an issue. It's going to potentially reduce the stress on families who have difficulty meeting the requirements for providing lunches, providing the payments for lunches, though it will be able to allow us to get ahead of any potential reductions or changes to the food stamp or the SNAP changes that are potentially coming, you know, which has been proposed by the federal administration, so we're not caught in the lurch by, you know, families losing access at some point during the year and thus losing access to, you know, FRL. I don't know what that looks like yet. I'm not sure how many people necessarily do know what that looks like, looks like yet. But, you know, I would rather us not find that information out in October of, you know, next year than have 70 students all of a sudden not have access to, you know, potentially their lunches, you know, because there are changes being made wholesale. I just think, you know, I think there's a lot of excellent reasons to do this.
It's all our current procedure.
But, you know.
It's, it's all our current procedure. I, I'm not sure how familiar the board is with this, but we worked for two years with the entire leadership team and fundamentally changed the philosophies, values, and principles in which your food service program operates. There are no different meals. There is no one that eats without it. There is a different treatment of seconds.
Right.
Which is ironic in a society in which obesity is a great concern, that we're trying to make sure that everyone can eat as much as they want when we have federal guidelines of a certain dietary component. We can talk about that, but I please, they're, they're just, in that statement, there are too many things that are already addressed, one in which we're now absorbing over $80,000 worth of delinquencies on an annual basis because we don't shut anyone off at any age. So those are some of the things, and the operation is still running a surplus while it's absorbing all those delinquencies. So we may have something that's already in place.
Okay. Todd, and then I want to, I want to talk about food stamps versus free and reduced lunch, because I don't think they're the same thing. Todd?
I think the idea of the principal is good. I just don't think it's really feasible for us to do. I mean, my son, my son will buy lunch occasionally. On the days he does buy lunch, he complains that he barely makes it through the line enough time to actually eat his lunch. So everyone's buying their lunch. I think there's, knowing that no one's going to be turned down for a, a meal and that we cover that, I think that's a pretty good, a pretty good policy. I, I just, I get what Patrick's saying. I, I think it's, I just don't think it's something we could actually feasibly do.
So Brian, tell me if I'm wrong, but I think free and reduced lunch is determined at school level based on income. It's not connected to food stamps. The food stamps issue could be a problem for our families, i.e., that may lose access to as much food as they have access to now.
The new regulations primarily really impacted community eligibility programs, like the one that you see in Burlington, in which when there is a density of population that's eligible, then 100% of the population becomes eligible. Right. If that population shrinks, the process has been to continue to allow additional years under that, and then districts sometimes have had to pick up that 20% or that 30%. Some of the new farm bill that went through changed some of the community eligibility program, and I think there's some estimate that over 3 million kids are now ineligible for the free and reduced program that they used to be eligible for, or free meals, universal feeding.
Oh, okay.
So there's some of it. I'm a huge advocate personally and professionally, and have worked since I got into this district on universal feeding. It is the way we should go. And I think that as, as an entire state economy, it will drive an agricultural economy, it will drive a culinary economy, it will drive participation, it will improve our healthy eating, and we will, we will be better as a state for it. So none of my defensiveness is about that. It's, some of it is, is that belief is translated into fundamentally changing how we operate and not going. There's some districts that still hand out the paper bag when you're delinquent or you don't have money for, you know. And, you know, I find that to be horrendous, because this is an issue with parents.
Right. It's not the kids' fault.
Right. It's not the kids' fault. I'm going to let it to the doc, and then I'll come back to you.
I apologize for not being able to speak for the conversation, and I appreciate the procedures we have in place to avoid problems. The one caution I'm thinking as we're sitting here, the notion of applying K8 only whatever the procedures or plan would be, causes me concern because I continue to be concerned of the drop-off in participation from eighth grade to ninth grade. We know those families don't become wealthy overnight and no longer eligible. We just also know that paperwork completion, and high school stigma, and anything else that may go with that causes far less participation, nine through 12, in what is likely to be a continued need in that population. So I appreciate that. I think it may be beyond our capacity to do something more dramatic for K-12, but I would caution us to consider not including K-12 in whatever our procedures or our plan might be to support families.
Okay. Andre, then I can ask for a show of hands, I think.
I guess when we embraced on the conception of doing K through eight, I would probably want to see a K through 12 if we're going to do it, because I understand not everyone's going to want to fill out the paperwork because it may be the stigma associated, et cetera. But in essence, we are also creating a population that is going to be short-changed if we don't provide what we're providing, K through eight, but there's also nine through 12 that's consideration, and that is one of the larger populations. And I also understand the financial, what goes along with it, but I'm reassured that no one goes hungry, and that's actually a K through 12 application, correct?
Yeah.
But again, I would suggest that we look at the eligibility, and if those drop off, and then provide that, but given the, the untreated waters we're headed with financials, I think we, maybe prudence is in line here.
Okay. Okay. Does, you have something new?
I'd just like to know the cost of the K to 12.
Well, that's what we're deciding right now. Are we interested enough in this that we want the administration to spend the time to figure out the cost and to figure out what we could not do if we do this?
We could take a look at the revenue that came in for last year.
Yeah, there's a, there's a really active. Yeah, there's a, there's a really active, I was just saying to Patrick, there's a really active statewide advocacy on this right now. And there's most likely going to be some legislation introduced, possibly co-sponsored by Lori, going in to start off with a universal breakfast. If you recall, just a few years ago, there was a huge amount of advocacy to have the state pick up the delta in reduced meals.
Right.
So if you're reduced, you eat for free.
Right.
Because the reimbursement and then the state pickup.
Right.
So we have free and we have paid. There's still three categories because that's how the federal government reimburses. That started off with a breakfast element first.
Yes.
As a pilot, and then moved to lunch, and that was about five years ago. That same group of people that advocated and brought that through the State House is working again at universal feeding altogether, starting at breakfast and again moving to lunch. There's a lot of economic models that are out there about what does this drive with regards to an agricultural community? Because that's one of the elements, a more farm to school, what can the, what can schools commit to and therefore banks fund and finance because you've got future contracts?
Right.
So there's a, there's a real big cycle, and I'm really excited about it. I think it's just early for us to look, and it may be early so that we start to sour some of the other narrative that's going to be going into this as really highly positive.
Again, a caution on the K eight, no paperwork required, everything's free. Now you need paperwork, nine, 12, and wait, we weren't getting it anyway when they used to have to do paperwork. So with the conditioning of what families would expect and understand would, I think, be worse for high school students. So that, I, another good reason, I think, to look at whatever we do K 12. And I think that, I don't know exactly how the mechanics could work, but as I was listening to Andre, the idea that if we have families by virtue of the change are no longer going to be eligible. We may have the capacity, if we did, to know who they were and know what we get this year around, and maybe we have some internal mechanism or paperwork that says, you know, can we capture those people who by virtue of the law are maybe going to no longer be eligible for free lunch?
But I think we just read that it doesn't matter because we give them a meal regardless.
It's income eligibility, and the federal government changes at times, but people come in and out of income eligibility. So that's, like, the food stamps is more about the change in the food stamps is more about that 33 million or that number of people that would lose their eligibility for food stamps. In free and reduced, I think all the guidelines are up on our food service, but you can see that if, if you're making $329 a week and you have a family of four, you're eligible. If you're making $1 more, you fall-
So that eligibility isn't changing then?
Right.
It's the fact that their household food availability is changing. So the federal government is not changing the thresholds for-
Not in the free and reduced lunch population.
Okay. So then it would be, we really wouldn't be able to capture that concern that Andre is-
And, and let me also clarify that in a universal feeding, it's essential that all the paperwork comes in. It's one of the primary drivers of it not costing $4 million, but what you're actually doing is increasing that population.
Yeah.
And you need the paperwork. And what Fairfax found when they went to free was that their paperwork fell through and lost about 80% of people because they were getting it for free without the paperwork. But all the performers and the models went into receiving that reimbursement.
Right.
Yep.
I don't really want to, I just have a question.
Okay.
Is there a limit to how much debt a student can rack up in lunch?
We are early in this idea of being this open, and so, and what we do is that we issue to all the principals, the ones that have over $100 worth of debt in their account, not for them to collect it, but these are families that typically start to ghost authority because they're getting hit. So it gives us that opportunity that, that nine times out of 10, when we can connect them, we can serve them. And then once we, somebody becomes eligible, they could have $1,200 on their account when they become eligible. We have a chance to go back 30 days, but after that, it's just expunged. We don't carry debt on people who become eligible.
Okay.
Federal guidelines also requires your operating fund to clear debt out of food service at the end of every year. It's a big compliance issue that's not happening universally across the state of Vermont right now. Your district is doing it. We only have receivable accounts on our balance sheet.
What was that craziness that happened in Pennsylvania where the, what was that school district going to do? I can't remember. Something for kids whose parents hadn't paid their lunch bills.
Oh, yeah.
I don't remember the details. It was pretty-
Very public and awful.
All right. So Patrick, where are you?
I mean, I guess I need some, a little more clarification because the articles that I read about the food stamp thing linked the reduction in food stamp, I mean, basically that if you were a food stamp eligible, that you were somehow automatically enrolled as a free and reduced lunch now.
Well, there's direct certification, so that is correct. If you are receiving specific types of state support, you are automatically direct certified, which means we get a list and you're, you're certified, you don't have to do anything with the school district, you are pre-authorized. And then there are people, so if income eligibility, the work, I believe the food stamp is all about work requirement. So if you're within an eligible area and you can work, you're required to in order to keep your benefits. So someone could lose benefits and still meet an income requirement through the school and therefore the federal meals program and receive free and reduced. Their food insecurity would be out of the, out of the roof because of what just happened at the home with food stamps. But it's also one of the things, I mean, we work with probably 100 families on a regular basis about plugging them into community supports to try to address their food insecurity.
And this is, and then maybe this would be a better question for Beth. Can I get some clarity then around why the principals seem to have concern about lunch and feeding and the, whether or not students are feeling ashamed about getting specific kinds of food availability? If it seems like, you know, we're feeding them regardless because that's been an issue, not just with my experience at Fleming, but I know that Peter Farrell has brought it up, I think Wendy has brought it up.
The second entree issue.
Second, it's an issue.
And therefore, when the second entree issue is available to somebody that has money and this, and what is available to the person who has received a class lunch and consumed it, what's available to them is an endless salad bar. So that's the difference of what is available to me. But honestly, in talking about it with some of the leadership team, we're actually on the other side of whether we should just eliminate at certain age groups and developmental age groups. You know, where we don't have à la carte in, in really a K eight environment, we're producing an à la carte by allowing people to buy a second entree.
Please eliminate that, okay? My son comes home with a charge for ham. I'm like, I don't want you to have more ham.
So it's made us think about what are the options on the salad bar to create that unlimited bottomless salad bar as an attraction that if you're hungry, you have those options? Opposed to going to the point of following the 4% of our paid customers that get a second entree?
Right.
And, and moving 100% of our population over to being able to do that?
Mm-hmm.
Looking at it and saying, well, wait a minute, they're consuming a, you know, a 700 to 900 calorie meal. So maybe that's good, and what we can do is look at other options there. So there's a lot of dialogue, but honestly, it's one of those elements is that that's what it is. It's the second piece of pizza, it's the second entree. And a lot of times, our lunch people will let someone go through if they take another fully qualified meal.
Yeah.
Which doesn't make a lot of sense to any of us, except the fact that-
We are so-
Can't take pieces.
So I, I mean, we need to get a-
We are in the weeds.
Clear a picture.
Yeah, well, I mean, it is a clear, but I mean, you know, obviously, there's a lot of, the reason why, you know, I mentioned this and proposed it is because I had a lot of this information and then, you know, there's different aspects of this that all, you know, seem to make sense. You know, that, you know, as a community, do we value this? You know, we are a community with, at least certainly in Essex Junction, I get a decent-sized poverty level, you know? Will this help our community? Will this help the families who send children to our community? It's not just, in my opinion, about purely, you know, will this kid be able to eat salad or an extra piece of pizza? Sure. But it's about more than that. And so, I mean, where I am with it is I, I still think that it's something that we can do, or at least we should at least put in the effort to see what it would cost and what it would look like. I like the idea that it's being looked at statewide, but, you know, as I think we've come across earlier tonight, statewide initiatives don't always necessarily get where we want them to be in any timely manner, so.
Okay. So I'm going to push us to wrap up the discussion. So I think where we're at is a show of hands on how many people would like the administration to tell us what it would cost. Well, I'm hesitating because Patrick had said K through eight. We've heard a couple of people say if we're going to do this, we should do it K through 12. So let's say K through 12, what it would cost to provide universal access to extra portions? How do I want to word this? It's not a lunch, it's additional food at lunch. Right?
No.
No, I think he's saying-
No, the idea is that instead of some people paying and some people not paying, nobody pays.
Nobody pays.
But that's a different issue from if anyone gets a second helping.
Right.
Okay. Because once nobody pays, then everybody can get a second helping.
Or maybe nobody could get a second helping.
Or nobody can.
Could nobody get a second helping without providing you for some?
My daughter would love it if I'm the one responsible for her not being able to get a second piece of pizza.
I don't know. I, I don't know. We wouldn't have any laws. We don't fit into making that happen. We would create those.
I just have one comment about, Brian, I appreciate, I came in thinking, of course, yeah, let's try, see what it costs. But you're, what you said today, there's so much happening and statewide, and if Essex becomes the place that people, that we're doing it, and it does put, affect the state as a result, or change the conversation, I hadn't thought about that. I think that's really important to think about. And I also, huge shout out to our own Child Nutrition Program and Scott, those guys are so thoughtful and dedicated to the same, to the same commitment to feed our kids and not let anyone go hungry. And I personally just, I've had Todd as much as $56 of debt when I checked it finally with my low balance and been like, oh, man, you got to pay that. But so really, they do not, they, they do not turn your way, and none of my kids' friends have any idea that that was their balance. So just to say, I think it's a, I appreciate the work that's going on, and my reluctance to, to investigate it has to do with how it would change the conversation statewide and for other schools and communities. Less affluent and privileged.
Less comment.
Well, you're going to propose a show of hands for a K through 12 absolute free, but I think some of the discussion also centered whether we wanted to pick up those that lose their eligibility. So the question is-
It was determined that that no one loses their eligibility.
It's two separate programs.
Okay, well, all right. So I guess, I'm not sure if I'm on board with K through 12 entirely.
Yeah, I don't think the idea's fully baked enough to actually comment on, frankly. We don't really know what we're talking about.
I think we know what we're talking about. I think we're talking, what Patrick's asking us is, should we ask the administration to tell us what it would cost to provide free lunch to every one of our students?
Okay.
And I think we could ask for K eight and K 12. We've heard some arguments that if we're going to do it, it should be K 12.
Okay.
Show of hands?
Show of hands, how many people want the administration to investigate the cost?
Of K through 12?
Yeah.
Okay. Speaking of-
Okay. All right. So I think we're, that begins our table ending for now, and I think the discussion has been helpful. And I think we should watch what's happening at the state level.
Yeah.
And whatever support we can to have effort. Okay. Any local update, Patrick?
No, I mean, we're just into budget with, so, I mean, short of, I think the only thing that had to do with the school district itself was they were talking about some of the plowing and how they can get some of the, especially in the town outside the village, how they can get some of those sidewalks clear for the kids to, yeah, get the busing. So that's, I know that there's some petitions circling around right now, some residents who live on places that don't have the plows in place or they're not getting out in a timely manner. So probably bears watching, but I can do that and let people know if there's an issue.
Okay, thanks. Can, can you think of anything statewide? I think the, the big thing is the healthcare settlement. I mean, it's going to take a while before, I mean, we certainly know that our support staff are only eligible right now. If they were full time, then people who work 17 and a half hours soon would be eligible. So that's certainly going to be a cost, but it's going to take a while for us to figure it all out. Okay. I'm not going to give us time to do the meeting evaluation now because we do have an executive session. Our next meeting is January 7. So I will undertake a motion now going to executive session to discuss employee, employee violation pursuant to Title I, Section 313, Subchapter 38 or Sub 30.
Will you invite the superintendent?
Thank you, Todd. Todd makes the motion. We can invite Beth to attend, and we move forward to the conference room.